Good evening. Welcome to the Weathersfield Town Council meeting for Monday, April 17th, 2023. Town Manager Presley, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, could you please take attendance?
Yes, Councillor Carbone.
Here.
Councillor Clancy.
Here.
Councillor Forrest.
Here.
Councillor Hill.
Here.
Councillor Lesser.
Here.
Councillor O'Connor.
Here.
Councillor Pentelow.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Mazarella.
Here.
Mayor Rel. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight is the public hearing on the 2023-2024 budget. The format's going to be a little bit different than our usual town meetings. First, we're going to have a presentation from Superintendent of Schools, Michael Emmett, followed by a presentation of the town budget by Town Manager Presley. After that, after both of those presentations are finished, we'll open it up to public comment. Everybody, I believe, has signed in. We have their names up here. We'll be calling them in order. And you have 10 minutes to speak at the first round. If you people wish to speak for the second round, they're welcome to come up, have an additional 10 minutes, and we'll do that with a forming of a line for the second round so we know who wants to speak. I'll ask all the commenters to state their name and address once they get to the podium for the record. So with that, I guess we can start the presentation from Superintendent Emmett.
Board of Education budget. The Board of Education started this process in earnest back at the beginning of the year in January, and we went through an arduous process of developing line by line a budget that we feel meets the needs of our students in the town of Weathersfield. So this has been presented both at the Board of Education level. It was done on March 13th, and then I presented the following week here before council along with a question-and-answer session this evening, provide you again with the highlights. Please know for members of the public that our budget information is readily available on our website on the main homepage. Click on the icon where it says "Budget Information," and you'll have the presentations along with the line item budget as well. So for the current year, for 2023, we have an adopted budget of $59,869,601. That's what we're currently operating under. Right now, we are operating on budget. We're not over budget. We're not under budget. We expect to come in at zero at the end of this fiscal year. For 2023-24, the Board of Education unanimously approved a budget of $63,370,872. This is an increase of $3,501,271 above the current operating budget and represents a percentage increase of 5.85%. The district needs that are included, in addition to maintaining all staffing, current staffing levels, along with all current programs and extracurricular activities, we're looking for some additional items for next year's budget. We're looking for $30,000 to purchase instruments. We have not purchased musical instruments in years, and we have a total of $90,000 requested by our music teachers. We are looking for a third of that to start the process of replacing some of our outdated and broken equipment. We're also looking for a classroom desktop computer upgrade. $200,000 was requested by our IT team, and we, at this point in time, put forward a request of $100,000. This is to replace desktop units in current classrooms. The reason that we're looking to do this is that the operating system with the current machines will no longer be supported after next year, and these will become a cybersecurity concern. We're also looking to add a K6 math program. This is a five-year commitment for $500,000. Year-over-year, if we compare the five-year commitment versus a year-over-year, we're going to save a couple hundred thousand dollars by that five-year investment. The current Go Math program is no longer being supported. It's being retired by the publisher, and the math committee for the Weathersfield Public Schools will be bringing before the board later this month a recommendation for a new math program. So this $500,000 will cover the cost of professional development and all materials over the course of the next five years. We're also looking to add $60,000 for subunits to allow our teachers at the high school to do curriculum writing. We are anticipating our NIASC report coming out. It was due out in March. NIASC has delayed that until June. We are anticipating that it will tell us that we need to update curriculum. We need to write new curriculum, and this opportunity will allow our teachers across the departments to be able to work collaboratively, to write new curriculum for upcoming courses for the future. We're also looking for some staffing. We are looking for a total of three special education teachers, one at Weathersfield High School, one at Silas Dean Middle School, and one at the elementary level. We have seen our prevalence rate in special education go up pretty dramatically over the course of the past decade, and this will work to reduce caseloads so that students get the best quality services possible. In addition to that, we're looking for two additional social workers for a total of $150,000. One will be housed at Silas Dean Middle School to help us replicate a wellness center, which we have implemented this year at Weathersfield High School with existing staff. It has been a wonderful experience for our kids to have this option at the high school level. We'd like to expand it down to the middle school level. In addition to that, we're looking for one social worker to be at the elementary level to provide mental health support. We have one more year remaining of our clinical service contract before the grant runs out, and we know we'll not be able to maintain that for the future. So this is an option of thinking ahead to make sure that we're providing the mental health supports for our kids. Just go quickly through the salaries and the budget factors. Again, the bulk of this budget increase comes down to people. Salaries are increasing. These are contractual increases, and the salary increases represent just a shade under 50% of the total budget increase. Again, one of the challenges we faced over the course of time with substitute teachers, it's getting substitute teachers and getting staffing. So this is one of the things that we're looking to do. We're looking to make sure that we're adequately funding this so that we have qualified teachers in classrooms with our students. Again, the benefit package, that's another one of the things that we deal with every single year. Right now, we are projecting a 12% increase in health insurance. This is 14.77% of the total budget, its benefits. And again, I do want to make mention of the defined benefit. We're still waiting for those numbers. They come along later on this spring. We'll make the adjustment as those numbers come in from the town. In terms of instructional program improvement, we're increasing that area by $47,659. This is due to the greater need for interpreter services based on student enrollment. As I said back in March, we are on the cusp of almost 400 English-language learners, and 10 years ago, we were barely at 100. So we're seeing an increasing number of students coming in from other countries. We are now hosting a number of families from the Ukraine. We've had students come in from Afghanistan, from Iraq, from Colombia, most recently from Venezuela. We're getting kids in from all over the world, and we have an obligation to provide them the appropriate supports. Legal services will increase. We've got a marginal increase there for next year. That is based on the reality that we will be negotiating three contracts, three union contracts, next year. Also, I want to talk a little bit about the instructional rents and leases. One of the things that we're looking to do here is we have Chromebook leases wrapping up. We're going to look to purchase Chromebooks. It's cheaper, more economical, and we end up, we end up getting a very good price for those Chromebooks. So we're looking to purchase instead of lease. And these leases, we've done over the course of time so that it is a predictable cost as opposed to a large ticket item every single year. Again, I do want to make mention that we're projecting magnet tuition increasing. This is due to higher enrollment at Creck and Learn Magnet schools, including those services receiving, students receiving specialized services. If the student's receiving specialized services, the district has an obligation to pay for those services even if they are attending a magnet school. Want to talk a little bit about supplies as well. This is an area that we typically cut every single year when we do the deliberations on the budget. The inflation has hit us hard. The cost of a case of paper has gone up dramatically. The supplies across the board have gone up dramatically. So this is one thing that we're facing. We obviously need supplies. We need to make sure that our classrooms are appropriately stocked with materials for kids to learn. So this is something that we're looking to increase and not something that we're looking to cut. And again, I do want to make mention also the books and periodicals. This represented right here is in relation to the K6 math program. I'd certainly like to give the opportunity to shout out our teachers on that math committee. We've piloted two programs this year, and we believe that we're bringing forth a quality research-based program that is going to serve our students very well. Just want to talk a little bit about equipment and dues. And again, this talks again about the lease, switching over from the lease to the purchase of Chromebooks. I am very proud, standing up here this evening, to say that we are a one-to-one district, and I know that all of our students have the ability to be able to access their classroom material from home. Again, I will say this, though. There is nothing that takes the place of the relationship between the teacher and the student. So the Chromebooks are an excellent support to the quality instruction that is provided face-to-face. Do want to also mention dues and fees. We, as a district, subscribe to a variety of different organizations, including a membership to the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. There is a cost to that, and that's what you see here. Want to talk a little bit more about the budget timeline, and then I will defer to my colleague, Mr. Presley, for the town budget presentation. So as I mentioned, we started this process back at the beginning of the year. We had formalized budget workshops. These were public meetings that were held on Saturday, the 25th of February, and again on Wednesday, March 1st, and Wednesday, March 8th of 2023. I presented the proposed budget to the Board of Education on March 13th. It was unanimously adopted by the board on that evening. It was then sent to town council. I presented this budget to town council on March 20th, and then we are here this evening before you for the townwide budget hearing. Next steps, of course, will be deliberation. I know representing the board, we'd be happy to sit down and talk further about specific lines or specific questions that you may have, with the hope of getting a budget allocation by charter no later than May 15th. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Mazarella, members of the town council, citizens. Again, my name is Fred Presley. I'm the town manager, and I'm very honored tonight to be presenting to you the fiscal year 2024 budget. The budget theme for this year that we've chosen is "Meeting the Challenges of Today as We Chart Our Course for Brighter Tomorrow." I would like to thank, right off the bat, staff, particularly our directors of our departments and our divisions, for all their hard work pulling this together on their individual budgets, and also special thanks to both Mike O'Neill and Joe Clerkin in the Finest Department for doing all the number crunching and bringing this together, and Cheryl Pierce, who's out in the hallway, for helping us pull all this together and all the documents that are part of this process. In front of you now is kind of the agenda for my presentation tonight, and the way this will roll through is you'll see whatever's highlighted in the Weathersfield Onion color red there will be the item that we're going to speak to next. So we're going to start with accomplishments. I think it's important that, before we jump into next year's budget, we kind of talk about where we've been and what we've been able to accomplish this year. I'm not going to read through all of these items, but I think it's important to note that we have done a lot this year. We've done a lot of major new initiatives, and a lot of this is through grants, through ARPA funding, and through other resources. But just highlight a few of them. We are in the middle of a full classification and compensation study for our staff. It hasn't been done here for over a decade, and that's something that's going to help us stay competitive in the market as we look to attract the best talent possible. We are in final stages of implementing a new agenda management system, and that'll help these meetings run much better and allow for better public access to the information for these meetings. We are, we just recently completed our online permitting system, which is something that's been lagging out there for a few years now. So we got that fully implemented so people can apply for permits fully online now, pay, submit their plans, and these are all things that we should have done a long time ago, but I think we're finally catching up and doing some great things. We began the process. We put out an RFP for Strategic Plan Facilitator, a consultant, to help the council to pull together a strategic plan for the town of Weathersfield. This, again, is something that hasn't been done for quite a long time, and strategic plans are very important to this process, this budget process, because they really give us the marching orders of what to present back to the council with respect to their budget. We completed a major fire department study, which was presented to this council about a month or so ago, and we also did an organizational-cultural assessment here for our employees, which, again, is something that it gives a voice to the employees and let us know what's important to them. Lot of other things on here that I'm not going to dive into, but I just think a lot has been accomplished in a short period of time. So the next what we're going to do is go into a little bit of a community profile. I believe it's very important that, before we start talking about what we need, we need to know where we're at. So, and some of the things I'm going to talk about in this section are important to some ways that we approach this budget moving forward. Generally speaking, many of you know Weathersfield population's about 27,000 as of the 2020 census. Unemployment rate is about 4.2%, which is better than the state as a whole, but still, and it's also improving. Median household income is, has creased $100,000. It's $100,557,000 as of 2021, and the average assessed value of a single-family home, and that's what you're paying your taxes on, the assessed value, is $175,395. But also note that the average market value of a single-family home is $250,000-plus. So you can imagine that when we complete the next revaluation, which starts in the fall, that that $175 number's going to go up, but obviously the tax rate will be adjusted accordingly. Weathersfield-specific challenges with respect to that overview that you just heard. Weathersfield is largely built out. As we all know, it's predominantly residential. The grandlist growth is limited by that fact, the fact that we have very little open land. There's a lack of viable development opportunities throughout the town. Our average grandlist growth is only about 1% to 2%, and this year's grandlist growth was on the lower end of that. It was 1.2%. So that makes Weathersfield particularly impacted by the higher inflation rates that Mike Emmett just spoke about when he did his presentation. The chart to the right, which I hope you can see, it's a little hard to see here, but it basically shows, it's from the Department of Labor Statistics, Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it shows how quickly inflation has shot up, particularly in the last couple of years, and how it's starting its way back down, but it's still very high. As of February, we're still at over 6% inflation. So I thought it'd be useful just to talk about that household, median household income, and what I did also was I show you the mil rate overlaid on that. So between 2017 and 2021, median household income has increased by about $20,000. Now, for a town like Weathersfield, where it's built out and you have limited growth, generally the income rises based upon external market conditions. Inflation goes up, salaries usually go up to keep pace with that, and generally what you see in towns like that is the mil rate also follows a close path to that. What we see here is that, with the exception of 2017 to 2018, these are calendar years, not fiscal years, that the mil rate jumps up, but then it goes on a steady decline. Now, part of that is due to COVID and the reaction that the council had to make to COVID and the uncertainties inherent in that, but it started before that, and it continued until last year where there was a slight bump up of about a half a mil. And so next, I want to talk about just the budget overview based upon this background that you now have. We talked about inflation. The chart on the left is, again, from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and that shows what the inflation rate is as of February 2023, year to year, and you're looking at, for all items, all categories, it's just over 6%. But things like food and energy were high, and that really drives that number up. And if you take away food and energy, it's in the 5.5% range. Now, again, a town like Weathersfield is particularly susceptible to inflation, and the budget impacts, some of those are shown here. Healthcare costs up 12%, workers' compensation costs up 5%, utilities 7.5%. And I'll mention on utilities, we're fortunate in that right now, we're locked into an electrical agreement that keeps our price per kilowatt hour at seven cents. So that's very low. I think market right now is 21, but that expires this year, so then we're going to have to negotiate a new long-term deal. So we have that for half of this fiscal year, and then it goes away, so we have to build in even higher rates for electricity. But this includes electric and gas. Pension liabilities are up 11.5%, retiree medical up 10%, salaries and wages up a conservative 3.12%. That's based upon current contracts, and like Mr. Emmett, we are going to be in negotiations with three different unions, four different unions, actually, moving forward. So we have to assume increases in there, again, based upon the market and the inflation. So again, the general budget overview, these two charts you will find in the budget book, which you can find online on our website. The one on the left is the general expenditure summary. You can see the biggest chunk of that pie, the red, is the school budget. That's the full amount, the 5.8% increase included in that. And then the other pieces, the larger ones, are public safety and physical services are the two largest ones after that. On the revenue side, the largest chunk there of the blue is obviously property tax. Again, residential community largely built out, so the vast amount of the impact from our budget is going to be falling on our residents here. So by the numbers, the proposed budget represents a 6.75% increase in expenditures in total. The town's part of that increase is about 7.75%. The Board of Education's increase is what was already discussed, at 5.85. I'll note that 49% of the proposed town increase is from putting capital funding back into the budget that was removed last year, and it was replaced with ARPA funds. So we're just supplanting that back into the general fund because it was taken out last year, so that's, that's almost a mil in itself. That's about $2.1 million. We also keep pace with our unassigned fund balance. This is a very important factor. We have to be prepared for what might happen that we don't know about. The rainy day fund, as people like to refer to it. Rating agencies want to see that strong, and generally, anything between 8% and 12% is the range they really need to see, and it's, the higher, the better off you are in terms of their rating of you, and the better our rating, the lower interest we have when we borrow money for school projects and things like that. And on that note, debt service continues to decrease. We dropped another $434,000 this year, or 8.7%. That's after dropping about $900,000 last year. As that high school bond begins to come off, we'll see that number tick down, down, down. Obviously, the school bond initiative for the elementary schools did not pass, but we know that in the very near future, we're going to have to do something. So getting this number as low as possible in anticipation of having to do a new borrow is very important. So in general, one mil's worth about $2.4 million. The proposed budget has a mil rate of 43.81, and that's for real estate and personal property, and that represents an increase of 2.73 mils. It's a huge increase. It's a big price tag, and I get it, and I know that that's hard to swallow for a lot of people, and we'll talk about why it's as high as it is and where we go from here. The vehicle rate proposed is 32.46, and that's based upon the state cap. The budget proposes a $200,000 increase in the road fund, and that is really to keep pace with all the projects we're doing. Something that happens when you get a lot of grants for infrastructure and projects like that. We do more and more projects, and you see the folks out there on our streets more and more, but that drives up our cost on our side, too, because we have to provide safety flaggers, we have to provide police details, we have to provide physical services assistance on certain projects, so it's important that we increase that amount. And then, on the average assessed value home that I talked about earlier, that $175,000 price tag, based upon this proposed mil rate, they would see an increase, annual increase of about $479. So next, I'd like to speak a little bit to the priorities of what's driving this budget for us. First and foremost, it's commitments, mandates, and community needs. We have a lot of responsibilities that we have to meet. I already spoke about restoring that capital funding. That's $2.1 million. Maintaining a strong fund balance is critical, as I already alluded to, and why. We're also proposing an increase in the contingency funds, and again, that has to do with our use of contingency funds in the past, but also anticipation, particularly given the way that the prices and inflation have driven up project costs so much. We're seeing that a lot of projects are coming in well over price of what we're getting estimates on, and just getting ourselves prepared so that we can continue to move forward with things, even if we get caught in that situation. It gives us more flexibility. And again, the rating agencies look at those reserves very positively. We also talk about adequately funding our contractual obligations and anticipated market-driven increases on salary and benefits. So we have increases in there for health insurance and other employment benefits, and then salaries that I already alluded to. And then adequately funding other contractual and anticipated market-driven increases. We have increases from MDC. We have increases from many of our contracts that we do with outside contractors that are built into the contract. We have to anticipate that those we go out for new this year, they're going to be much more expensive than they were two or three years ago. So we built some of that into this as well. Pay attention to those icons because you'll see those again later on in the presentation. Next priority, obviously, is education. So what you'll see in this budget is the full $63,370,872, which amounts to everything that requested by the Board of Education and represents the 5.85% increase over the last fiscal year, and that's approximately $3.5 million. I'll also note here that in August of each year, the town and schools go through a process whereby they estimate the cost of town services that benefit the schools that are really over and above what you saw in that budget number. And that's represented by what's now on our side, all the custodial support to the schools, the non-custodial services that are provided on the buildings, as well as debt service cost. And that number's pretty high. If you look at it, it comes out to be $7 million on the custodial, on the non-custodial side, and about $4.9 million on debt service. Now, the debt service number dropped down from when this was done, or the timeframe this was based upon, but then the other services went up because of the cost of supplies, mainly, because those custodial supplies all went up extremely high this year with the cost of inflation. And again, I talked about reducing the debt service. This is just a graph that shows over time where we're at with that. You can see the peak of that is when we're fully paying the debt service on the high school. It's on a pretty steep decline now. We'll see that continue until that project is complete or until such time as we're able to bond for future projects. Another priority I mentioned, road and infrastructure projects. There's a lot of work to be done on the roads throughout town. This budget does propose an increase of $200,000 that I referenced before, and again, this helps cover the expense of the safety flagger details, the police details, and added staff costs associated with our town road projects. A lot of the infrastructure for those road projects, the stormwater infrastructure, is actually done by our physical services staff to save us money, and our police details, obviously, are out on those town projects. Traditionally, from a budget perspective, those have been absorbed by those departments, but the number of projects going on right now, it's driving- But the number of projects going on right now, it's driving, uh, over time very high in those departments. They're over, over time in a lot of these areas because of these types of projects. And quite frankly, it's not where it should be coming from. It should be coming from the road fund and it's more transparent that way and it's, it's, it's better accounting. So we are proposing that all those, uh, expenses go to this fund and to cover that, we've added $200,000 to that fund. The proposed budget also proposes $25,000 in the engineering budget for sidewalk repair matching fund pilot. And this would operate very similar to our facade improvement program that we do with businesses. Um, and what it does, it would encourage, um, residents, homeowners to apply for matching funds to replace their sidewalks if they need to be replaced. It'd be first come, first served, just like our facade improvement program. The idea again though is to, uh, incentivize, get people to move more proactively because if you've walked around town, if you're a walker, you walk around a lot, there's a lot of sidewalks that need a lot of help, but it's a big expense for a homeowner if they have to replace multiple sections of sidewalk. And this is just, this is something that I've seen done in other towns effectively. And we thought as a pilot with $25,000, see how it works, we'll report back to the council. And if it's something that you want to continue with, you could refund it later. But for now, it's just an idea that we were passing around and we thought it'd be worth having as part of this budget discussion. With respect to capital improvement, uh, the capital improvement advisory committee has recommended projects totaling $1,247,747 for funding this year. Um, that's pretty, um, much in excess of what's been done in the recent past. Uh, they've been more or less focused around that $900,000 to $1 million level. But in conversations with, uh, both the mayor and the deputy mayor and the members of the committee, they really felt that we need to step up our game with respect to our capital improvements. And, uh, so this is what they're proposing forward. That includes drainage projects of $100,000, pavement maintenance, 125,000, fire safety, 50,000, sidewalks, 225,000. Those are town-owned ones, by the way. Um, town buildings, school buildings, 295,000, parks, recreation, 75, community development, 200,000, and then communication systems, 79,000. The budget, um, there are several positions that were requested by, uh, town departments. I will note that most of these positions are not part of the number that you see. We, we left those out. We did not recommend any positions forward, although there are ones that we definitely want to discuss with the council as part of the deliberation process. I will note that there are a few, um, that first is the deputy chief, uh, for fire suppression. It's $9,000. It's not a true position. What it is, it's, we have a volunteer fire department, so this is a stipend. Uh, but the new chief feels it's important that he has, um, another deputy chief level position to help him properly manage, um, his operation. And this is one of the recommendations, I believe, in the fire report too. Um, next, under my office, CIP administrator position, that's capital improvement projects administrator. This was a position actually that the, um, council, uh, both funded through ARPA and approved, um, mid-year last year. We did hire somebody for that position. Um, they were here for a very short time and due to issues beyond our control, they, they had to leave the position in very short turnaround. So we re-advertised for that position and just recently, we're fortunate enough to rehire a local resident we were very excited to have on board and, um, but that position is funded through the ARPA. We still have the funding available. So this is a revenue neutral position and our budget neutral position. Um, so we do not have to worry about that. So that one is included in the budget. You'll see it in my, um, budget, uh, section, but it does not require budget funding. Moving forward, that position, the goal is to have that completely funded through admin, grand administration costs. So, um, money from the grants that we administer every day, um, that, that'll help fund this position to move it forward. And finally, um, just one I want to focus on, it's not in the budget yet, but, uh, it's something that I do believe is worth, uh, serious consideration and that's a mason in the physical services department. We already have one mason who's very busy. Um, I asked the question of physical services and, and, and the mason, what, if you had another mason and another team that you could send out on projects, are there projects on our capital improvement list that was approved by the committee? Are there projects on that list that we could do in-house that we otherwise couldn't do without it? And they said there were and, um, we looked at the amount and it totaled well over $230,000 that we could knock off of that CIP list if that's the desire of the council. And it also then gives us more capability to do other projects above and beyond those projects on the CIP list. And there are many. We have a list of mason-related projects, probably on the order of about 40 projects that are on the list and we prioritize, we do what we can based upon availability, but the reality is availability is limited because it's one mason with, with, with crew members. So is, there's only so many jobs that can get done in a year. I think adding the, the second crew would go a long way to helping us deal with our own sidewalk problems, our own, you know, retaining wall and those types of issues that we have throughout town. But we'll discuss that more as part of the deliberations and the work sessions. So next I'll go into the budget summary, um, to kind of wrap up and, and talk about, um, what this all means. So if you imagine that our entire budget, our general fund budget, the $121 million is represented by this dollar bill. Um, if you were to take the schools request, uh, the schools requested budget, that, that whole $63 million, that accounts for about 52% of that dollar bill. Okay? So that's right out of the gate. If you add in that 11 plus million dollars of other services that we provide the school that I talked about earlier, um, that gets you to another 10%. If you look at just the cost of our, I think just like Mike Emmett talked about on his side, um, the biggest driver on our budget is salary and benefits. And so if you look at just our salary and benefits, that's 25% of the total ask here. Um, if you look at everything that's non-departmental in our budget, so those are things like, um, the CNEF, the capital expenses, the, the OPEB money, the leases, all those types of, uh, things that fall outside of any given department, um, that's going to give you another approximately $11 million, around another 10%. So what that leaves us with is about 3% of the budget that's departmental, um, budget that we're, really is going to be the focus of the next three work sessions as you bring departments in. And, um, of that I want you to keep in mind that there are contractual obligations and there's, there are inflation pressures that are part of the request for increase. And the total increase in, in that's part of the budget is $600,000, a little bit over. Um, and when we talk about a mil rate, um, one mil is $2.4 million. So if we're going to go beyond that, we've got to look in all those other sections. So I just thought this was a helpful representation to kind of help visualize that for folks. Although it seems like a high rate to ask people to pay, there's really not a lot in here. This is really maintaining, uh, and, and again, the pressures that Mike spoke about with effect to inflation, they're very real and they're very real to our budget. So we're going to have to deal with those. But what does this budget accomplish overall? Um, number one, support for our schools. It fully funds the Board of Ed's requested budget. It funds our commitment and obligations that I talked about. It restores that capital funding that is critical. We've got to keep that in our budget. Um, it's something that belongs from the general fund. We need to, uh, maintain it and we need to increase it. And I'm glad that that's what the proposal is because $900,000 a year for capital, year to year capital for a town this size with the resources we have just doesn't even begin to, uh, to cover it. So I'd like to see that go up even higher in future years, but for now I think it's a good start. Um, this budget maintains our level of services. It does not increase it. It's really about maintaining. It also maintains or slightly increases some of our reserve funds because again, those things are only going to help us in the future when we go out to bond for, for future capital projects. And it continues to reduce the debt service again for when we go out for bonding in the future. So that is the budget in a nutshell. With respect to schedule, Mike alluded to some of this. Here we are at the budget works, uh, the budget public hearing. We have three work sessions coming up with the departments where each department will present to the council their individual budgets and be, ask questions and be able to provide those answers. Those will take place, um, starting tomorrow and then again on Thursday. And then we have a, a third one on Tuesday of next week and those are all in the fireside room over in the Pitkin Center. Um, beyond that, the first deliberation meeting is April 26th, also in the fireside room. And then we have several potential deliberation meetings as necessary, as the council deems necessary, uh, with a regular council meeting being on the second, uh, Monday in May as opposed to the third. So note that we're, we're at the second and fourth this month because of the budget schedule. And then again, approval of the budget is slated for May 15th. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
So as I said earlier, uh, now is your time to, uh, share with, our, your thoughts with us. And, uh, if the people, even though they've filled out a card, if they could state their name and address for the record when they come up to the podium. Uh, first speaker will be Claudio Borja.
Well, we heard some fantasy. Let me get to some reality here. I'm very disappointed in our new town manager believing that he can consider a budget increase at this time, which was raised taxes by approximately three mils. Every year that I was involved in a budget, I didn't go in and tell everybody, okay, we're starting here. What do you want? And then increase. I had to go in and say, what are we cutting to get to where we are? That's the difference in, you know, reality versus fantasy. He needs to know as well as all of our elected officials, that's not what you desire in a budget, but the taxpayer can afford to pay. And calculations of the average incoming Weathersfield for housing, transportation, food, healthcare, insurance, and adding in inflation without anything for contingencies like you have added, the average Weathersfield resident is currently $100 in the hole. I brought this up at the last year's budget meeting and the data supported by the residents shot down the school referendum in spectacular fashion. I was at that vote about even bringing it up for referendum, provided a lot of data, a lot of analysis. The only one on this committee was Tom Lazarilla that voted against doing that. Everyone else, let's go and do it. Data doesn't support you, but you're running on ideological beliefs and things like that and not actual hard numbers and data. That's, that's where we need to get. Um, I believe it is primarily not a political issue, it's a moral issue. It is a moral issue and constitutional issue because people's property is an extension of themselves and the tax represents a heavy and unfair burden on residents, especially retirees or anyone on a fixed income. Weathersfield has a higher than average elderly population that are on fixed incomes and can't absorb the proposed increase. 50% of the United States population cannot afford a $400 emergency. If you can't afford a $400 emergency, how are you going to afford a $400 to $600 increase in your taxes year to year? Because the taxes charged each year, the burden remains the same even if someone has stopped working. Sometimes, you know, someone could buy fewer goods to pay less in sales taxes or manage their salary or hours to pay fewer income taxes. But the only way to lower one's property taxes is to sell your property and move into a smaller home or to rent. That flies in the face of property rights. The state and municipal leaders have for years made promises and bargaining agreements with each other and left out the taxpayer from the discussion. Not all of us have great healthcare and pensions when they're all said and done with their career. Data shows state municipal workers' healthcare and pensions end up higher than private business. That is never going to work because private business is what supports the state municipal capabilities. What is called for now are responsible and difficult decisions. The current path we are on is unfair to the average taxpayer that does not work for the state or municipal government and more than that is unsustainable. The current town council was elected to show its leadership and support the overall good of its community and not inflict more burden on its citizens. When you have bad federal policy in conjunction with bad public policy, the outcome will no doubt it be bad. Moving forward with approximately three mil increase is shameful and shows a lack of understanding of the taxpayers who at this time are in dire straits. There should be no increase to the budget. Instead cuts need to be made for our budget to be balanced. Let's put our priorities, the health and welfare of all the people in Tyler Weathersfield in place for a sustainable future. Now, I thought about it more and when I was listening to Mr. Emmett, he made some good points. I'm a very pro-education person and maybe what we need to do is figure out how we can cut the three to one and a half and give the education department what they need. But on the other side, we've got to put our priorities in place because I just don't think the money's there. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudio. Could I ask Enzo Cavalli to please come up?
Hi, I'm Enzo J. Cavalli, 311 Main Street. And I think you should support this full school budget. My teachers that, that I've had over the years work very hard. They have taught me to love reading and love writing. This year, my, um, teacher really helped me with math. They should be paid more. Do, do you know that teachers spend their own money to get classroom accessories? A kid might do a klutzy move causing a yoga ball or something to break, which means they wasted money. The porters teachers should, shouldn't worry about, about spending money. I wish Hamner was in better shape with better teach, with better tech, more outside space and a bigger classrooms. Really, I would, I would, really, I would like you to support the rebuilding of Hamner. I might not be able to get to see it, but future kids need it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I was expecting like a 70-year-old person to come up.
Thank you. My name is Bob Woodward. I live at 456 Middletown Avenue. We have lived in Weathersfield. We have lived there for 45 years. And I need to remember tonight to say, I speak as an independent. I am neither a Democrat nor a Republican. And I do not want to redirect any of my remarks at the library or the library staff. I heard nothing about the library budget, but I am always pleased to go into our town's library. I want to redirect my remarks to all of you or many of you, elected, appointed, or hired in this town, because this town budget is your fault, not our fault. Let me start by saying, I sat in Walgreens recently waiting for a prescription refill, refill. A couple came in about my age. He had a cane. The woman said something about a medication I knew was a heart medication. She was told $900. I thought she was going to have a heart attack on the spot. She said, I don't have that with me. This is what we have in the town. We are real people. We are not assumptions that you can take 6% of our income and add it to this budget, which is basically the fault of the town government. Drive around the town. Look at, look at Silas Dean Highway. How many empty storefronts are there? How many empty buildings are there? The Weight Watchers building has been empty for how many decades and the Democrats a few years ago won an election by saying we were going to get a furniture store in there and it went over on the Berlin Turnpike to Newington. The former nursing home up on Jordan Lane, the Rite Aid building, uh, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond will go out costing a neighbor a job. Empty buildings do pay taxes, but they don't pay the kind of taxes that a building pays when it has something going on. That would improve the tax base in the town. Yes, we are a primarily residential town, but I'm sick of hearing we're all built up when all these empty buildings are out there. Look at the towns around us. East Hartford has all kinds of projects going on with grants and developers. Rocky Hill got a grant for, um, Brownfield's cleanup of the old, of the old Ames Store headquarters and has apartments going in there. And someone I keep reading, waiting to put apartments in across the street. Bristol, New Britain, West Hartford, I went to lunch. I went to lunch with a friend in Newington a couple of months ago, and between her condo and the restaurant we went to, there were two active building projects going on, one right on Berlin Turnpike, one just off. Where are we in all of this? Where are we getting grants? Where are we getting developers? We're nowhere. But it's easier to govern by putting it on us. At least that's the impression. Just let it all fail and take the money out of our pockets. That's not a good way to govern. And then I look at some of the decisions this town makes, the lease on the Keeney Center and two other places that was written up in rare reminder not so long ago. The utilities, the tenants pay a fixed rate, leaving us to pay the difference? That was a town council lease about 20 years ago, apparently. Couldn't you change that lease and make it that the tenants will pay 30, 50, 60%, something more reasonable? There was a print shop recently on Silas Dean, a neighbor told me they had a new location all picked out in a commercially zoned building in town, because the building they were in, the owner apparently won't do some maintenance on it. Planning and zoning blocked it. Are we going to lose another business out there? That's not so good. I have decided I am not paying the paving tax until Beaver Road is done. If that's what it takes to get Beaver Road paved, then I'm going to stand up and do it. We have the post office, a funeral home, businesses down there, and that road is one of the worst roads in town. I hope it gets done before my taxes are due, but I mean it. I'm going to take the paving part out and not pay it until this town gets Beaver Road done. It needs to be done. There's already for rent signs down there. How many more businesses do we care to lose? And then there's 24 Maple Street, which my neighborhood is tired of fighting, but we keep fighting it. Just before COVID hit, Historic District Commission allowed two houses to be demolished. Planning and zoning allowed them to be converted to commercial. Our neighborhood fought at every step of the way and kept losing. COVID hit, what did we wind up? And then the owner of 24 Maple wanted to put a restaurant in the parking lot. All kinds of tax dollars. Except COVID hit, we have two empty house lots that are paying less taxes than they would if the houses were still there and no restaurant. Now, the owner wants to put a Starbucks in, less than a mile away from another Starbucks, and my neighborhood is back out there fighting that because that will increase the traffic. Will one of the Starbucks close? Will we wind up with another empty storefront in town? The farms that we bonded and purchased out of our pockets have taken taxable property out of the tax base. Yes, I support the environment, but when do we stop and say, what's going to be effective for the tax rate? Where are we going with the tax rate? The Cassia Farm plan seems confused, and it doesn't seem like anything that is going to benefit me or support me. It just feels like it's something that is a pipe dream, that's sitting there with our money being spent on it. Back when the Cassia Farm bond came to an open hearing here at this council meeting, someone said, "Divide the Collier Street part of it into lots. Sell them, take the money from the sale, take the tax money, use it to maintain the rest of Cassia Farms." Nobody told us at that point that the deed that was negotiated to buy Cassia Farm said it couldn't be sold. That was a brilliant plan, sell part of it. Well, I'll give you a suggestion. Get some federal grants, put solar panels on those farms, generate some electricity for the town, take the Cassia Farm solar panel area, run a line under the street over to Highcrest School, and get us out of some of the electricity bill. It might help. Federal grants, I think, were available for that. We have a budget going up, and yet we know that sitting out there is a bond issue for the schools. Are we supposed to take more money out of our pockets to pay that? I would have expected the town and the school budgets to go down to encourage us to have some money to do the maintenance that is apparently necessary on the schools in town. So now we take another what? If this budget increase is 6%, how much more is coming out of here? It's just easier to govern by taking it out of our pockets and never mind the tough decisions. Bloomfield wanted an eight-point-something percent increase. The town manager said, "The only way I'll support it is if every other increase in the town budget goes down." The eight-point-something was in the school budget. Milford was told by the finance committee, "You have to cut over a million out of your school budget." Why don't we, like Windsor, have a referendum on our budget? You want our money. Shouldn't we have some more say in it than just being able to get up and speak? Things have to change. You have to realize that we're real people. And at this point, I'm going to have to think seriously about 52% of this budget. We have paid 52% of this budget for nothing, because we don't have children, we've supported the school system, we believe in education, we've supported the bonding, which largely goes to projects that don't always benefit us. I'm going to have to think about whether I'm going to dig that 56% out of my pocket or maybe put it into projects that we need to do for maintenance on our cars and our property and our health expenses. Why am I paying money for nothing? The Declaration of Independence entitles us to fair and just taxes and to get something for our taxes. And we deserve to get something for our taxes. That 56% that gives me nothing is a serious cost to us. I'll leave you with some words from an American prize-winning writer. "The line it is drawn, the curse it is cast, the slow one now will later be fast. The first one now will later be passed, last. The present now will later be past. The times they are a-changing." This budget, the times need to change because not all of us can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. Nick Roscio, please.
Nick Roscio, 125 Walkout Hill Road. Looked through this budget packet, and a couple of things I wanted to mention very quickly. One thing I actually agree with the town manager on, it's on page I-5, it says we need to think differently. It's absolutely right. We have a spending problem in this town. Second thing is the mill rate. It's not a magic number. You take amount you need, divided by the grain list, times 1,000. We have a rebell happening in this fall. Guess what? Property taxes are going to go up. Doesn't matter if the mill rate changes or not. It's not going to happen. Then lastly, and with all deference to our town manager, I don't know if he has an economics degree, but the statement that wages catch up with inflation is laughable. To be bluntly honest, I'm shocked that statement was made. Based on CPI inflation, wages haven't come close to catching up. Just factual. It's out there. I just don't understand. So then lastly, before I get into my line-by-line items, which I'll give page references for all of them, right now, in this whole budget packet, there are six ARPA references. What I requested meetings ago was, it'd be great if we could see what the budget is, the ARPA funding, and what our total actual spend is. Because right now, there are things in the budget at the very back in the CNEF and CIP stuff that says general fund, which I believe are ARPA allocated funds, which would be a lot more helpful to figure out. You're not just asking for a 6.75% increase. That's after we spent already an additional $8 million. So just so people are aware, this isn't a 6.75% increase. That's an increase compared to the last budget, not anything actual real numbers. So let's talk about page B1, revenue summary, investment income. I was shocked, and I'd like to know your investment advisor. Last couple of years projected $63,079, give or take, $50,000, and then magically it went to half a million. Let me, guys, tell me who your investment advisor is, because that's shocking to me. Going up by a factor of 10? Amazing. Absolutely shocked. Second one, intergovernmental. Actuals $469,000, proposed $2.9 million. Again, where's the assumption there? Is somebody actually got, stayed on the hook, saying, "We're going to give you intergovernmental for $2.9 million"? Or is that just some magic number that was pulled out somewhere? License revenue, actual $912,000, proposed $480,000. How'd that get cut in half? I don't know. There's no footnotes. There's no way to actually tell what's going on. Then overall, any actual to budget? I'd actually like to know. We've got actuals from two or three years ago. We've got two years of proposed budgets, but no actual figures. It's amazing. So let's move on to page B4, conveyance tax. Actual dollar amount, $620,000 and change. The budget for '22, $320,000. Proposed $23,000, $400,000. What happened to the other third of that? Conveyance tax went away? No idea. There's no support. Then on to C2, this is my favorite. There's an asterisk, actual year-to-date asterisk, doesn't say what date it's to, doesn't give us any percentage differences, doesn't give us any variances. I've been asking for this to be prepared in Excel and actually released in Excel. It doesn't happen. It's in a PDF. Anybody who's converted a PDF to Excel knows, it's a huge pain to do, takes way too much time compared to what I have. Next one, page C3, account 5002, overtime. Actual $1.2 million. Proposal $880,000. Where'd that go? We magically got rid of a third of paid overtime? Fantastic. Sign me up. Compensated absences, 164% increase. Is anybody actually looking at the numbers and be like, hey, maybe we should look at that? Compensated absences, I apologize, went from $144,000 to a proposed $351,000 in account 52298. Nobody said a word, nobody questioned it. Eh, it's all right, 164%? It's fine. Page C4, account 53311, supplies doubled, $158,000 to $320,000. Shocking. Inflation's got to be high for supplies. Next one, account 196, same page, C4, 196-58812, OPEB, $976,000 down to $500,000. I know there's some funky transfers going on there, which is great, by the way. It'd actually be nice to know what the true unfunded liability is, what the funded liability is, and actually how much we're going to be on the hook for for the next 40 years. Nowhere in here did I see that. I didn't see any actuarial assumptions. I saw no mortality morbidity tables. I saw nothing. Shocking to me. Now, the deputy mayor's favorite topic, I looked at page C7 for CRCOG and CCM. We talked about return on investment. He had some not-so-shining things to say about my commentary, which I can appreciate, saying there was travel, which was the account title. Apologies, now we have the breakdown. Thank you for that. I actually, the law was asking for it in February, never came through, but here we are. Just want to read something very quick in the town I've got. Those two things for CRCOG, this is what we pay, $30,000 a year, it was transportation, assistance, homeland security, regional planning, purchasing, and other municipal services. Shouldn't that be saving us money instead of just costing us money? If somebody could actually explain to me how spending that money saves the town money, that would be great. I'd love it. CCM, they say information, advocacy, guidance, support, and collaboration between local officials across the state and lobbies, the state legislature, to make positive changes for municipalities. That should be on a 990 for a nonprofit, because that's the most flowery language I've ever heard for we-pay lobbyists to try to get more money. Like to call out a comment on page C11, which states, "It is difficult to compare year-over-year budgets due to COVID-19." Why not take a year pre-COVID? You know why? Because the increases would be astronomical. Page C13, seems somewhat convenient, two things, and I'll add on my earlier comment, which I should have made. The audit report for the town still hasn't come out. Shocker, the budget's going to be adopted before we actually have the audit report. And then the other one is on C13, "Three unions are in negotiations starting July 1st of '23. This budget, folks, is based on actual numbers, not what's projected. I can hazard a guess that the unions aren't going to ask for a pay decrease. There's another increase. So your mill rate's going to go up because the tax rate is going to go up because the revenue needed goes up." Next one, on page C16, in every departmental budget, there's a breakdown of salaries under account 5001. It's listed by employee for the proposed '22, '23, and '23, '24 budget. Not one actual number is in there. It's all summarized at the bottom with salary. I don't know why that is. That information should be readily available and included in this budget. I think that's ridiculous it's not included. Next one, town manager. From '19 to '20 to the proposed '23 to '24, the increase is 70%. Shocking to me. I don't know of anybody who's made 70% more than they made in those years. They have more power to them. Next, our esteemed police department, page C95, there's a car rental line. They've come in here asking for cars a bunch of times. I don't know why they'd need to rent cars. 12 at what says, maybe I'm missing this here, on the line it says 12 at $7,500, to the tune of $7,000 bucks. I don't quite understand that. Why do they need to rent cars? They've already got a travel budget that's pretty significant, training budget's pretty significant. I mean, even their laundry service is like 26 grand a year. Again, more money going out the door. Townwide Radio, C101, I apologize, I won't be able to make budget meeting tomorrow night. I have work engagement. Townwide Radio, actual '21 and '22 versus proposed $381,000 to $762,000, doubled. Is anybody actually questioning anything? I just, I can't get over it. And my last minute and 40, I'm going to go through a few of them here and on the ed budget. C126, 22% increase in engineering for equipment? How is that not capital equipment? What does it actually represent? Seems like it's just a number thrown with a multiplier on it from the prior year. It's not how any budgeting should be done. C141, Central Connecticut Health, from '21 to '22 to the current proposed 84% increase. That's not fiscally responsible. Page C146, and this was a shocker to me, I'll say this was one of the big ones. Account 51104, there's a pension line item, had an amount in there every single year, till now it's magically zero. Can't imagine that unfunded liability went away. So that means to me that somebody reviewed it, somebody prepared it, reviewed it, and somehow it got through review, and it's zero on a pension line. I've never known any town budget to have zero for a pension. Parks and Rec, 27% salary increase. Shocking. With these last few for CIP and CNEF, I'd like there to be general fund slash ARPA, because those numbers just seem ridiculous to me. Town buildings going from $98,000 to $2.4 million. Amazing. It's got Millwood's Pond in there, Willard, and a couple of other things that I thought was already taken care of. And lastly, in my last 20 seconds, F7, losses on investment in F9, interest and dividends, a loss of $18.7 million in the pensions and $3.8 million in OPEB, classified as interest and dividends that are negative. You lost 10% of the fund? Again, I don't know how that balances out with the $500,000 upfront. My last few seconds for the education budget, I definitely understand people are apprehensive about it. We've never invested in education in this town. I apologize. My time is up. I think that's the one place that we could actually and should actually spend money. The rest of this, I can't believe it made it on the paper.
Thank you, Nick. Carol Fisher.
Good evening. My name is Carol Fisher, and I live at 118 Randy Lane in Weathersfield. And I think I'm aging out, Bob Woodward. I've lived here for 47 years. I've raised, our family has lived here, and we had four children that went through the schools here in town. My husband was on the Board of Education. I love Weathersfield. Out of our four children, we have three that currently live here, and they have made lifelong friends. They are, my grandchildren are in the schools there now. I'm not here to talk about the schools, but I do love this town. And whenever people ask me, like, should I move into town? I say yes. And I think everybody here is concerned about our town, and I love that. What I am here to talk about is the library. And truth be known, I am a librarian, but not here in Weathersfield. It is in Rocky Hill. The library has, the proposed budget is only an increase of 1.7%. And the library, not like some of the other departments, it has materials and services for every person in this town, from babies to the elderly. Every aspect of knowledge that you would like is covered by our town library. And in this current economy... And in, in this current economy, as you know, books are very expensive, databases are very expensive, everything is very expensive. And through the library doors, everyone can come and access that information for free. No extra charge for free. And I'm also a member of the Friends of the Library. And that group is only there to supplement, not supplant, the general operating fund of the library. And there are other sources, but those sources are limited, restricted, and not available to use in the general operating fund. And those, those funds also have been accounted for in the library board's proposed budget. So that's all I have to say. Please, if you don't have a card, come and get a card and support your library.
Roxalano Luchkin.
Luchkin.
Luchkin, sorry.
Hi, I'm Ukrainian, so it's a bit of a difficult name. Roxalano Luchkin, Roxalano Luchkin. Nice to meet you all. Wow, this is an eye-opener to me. Holy cow. Holy cow. I'm floored. Like, I just, so I just came to this meeting on the invitation of Mr. Emmett, and he's a lovely gentleman. And my son goes to school here. And I was talking to Mr. Emmett about other things besides this, but wow, wow, and I just commend this gentleman here. And I'm an independent, too. I make my decisions based on what I learn, what I see, what I hear, and I've heard a lot in such a small amount of time. Wow. I've learned and seen and heard and learned so much. I'm floored. So like I said, I live here, but I rent at two seventy-six Main Street, across from the Creamery. Maybe you've seen my house, it's a yellow house. It's kind of falling apart, but I'm a single mom, so I can't really do too much, can't really fix it. Can't do too much because it's a historical town, so we can't fix the windows. My heating bill's about five hundred dollars a month. Luckily, I rent from the town church, so they don't raise my rent very much. Only, actually, I'll be honest, they only raised my rent twenty-five dollars in the last... How long have I been here, Dan? Probably like, I know Dan from back, back in the day, probably seven years. So I've only been, yeah, so I've learned a lot. So I took a lot of notes, but wow. So I'm also a yoga teacher. Namaste. Namaste, everyone. So with yoga, we believe in service. We believe in service, and that's like the library. The library is a service, a public service. I believe in public service. How can we use public service here to lower this budget, not raise the budget? I'm Ukrainian, and so I guess we have a lot of refugees here. Did you know that Weathersfield is one of the largest communities of Ukrainians? You have so many people here who would love to help their, their Ukrainian family and friends. I'll come for free and translate. I am actually a certified translator. But I'll do it for free, and I bet you I have a ton of other friends who'll do it, too. Why would you need to pay for translators? I have a ton of friends who'll do it. You have the largest Ukrainian community here. Do you know that down the street, across, well, past Buckley High School, my dad went to Buckley High School. Past Buckley High School is a Ukrainian church with a Ukrainian school in back of it. Why would you need to hire interpreters and translators? You can get them for free there. Myra, do you know what we're doing to raise everyday events, to raise money for that war? Why wouldn't we help the refugees here? What, what kind of money? I mean, I just, I'm floored. Wow, I'm really floored. I mean, I guess that's my biggest... I mean, there's so, I have so much that I could say, but I, I just, right now I'm so floored that I don't think I can speak anymore. I'm not really good at public speaking, so I apologize. But my mother always said, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. The squeaky wheel gets the grease. The squeaky wheel gets the grease, the one who shows up and shows themselves. So here I am. So I apologize. I'm a yoga teacher. Namaste. So that's all I'm going to say. I don't want to bore you with anything else. I have notes. I have tons of notes, but I'll share them with Mr. Emmett. I have lots of ideas, public service, volunteerism. You can get volunteers for so many things, my God. You have the elderly that want to help, involve them in helping at the school for free. I bet they'd love to help the children. I have a son who's fourteen. He loved his grandmother. She passed away two years ago. He loved his grandmother. He wanted to spend more and more time with her. Why not utilize that? Why not utilize that? Volunteerism, bring the budget, sorry, I'm in high heels. Sorry, just came from work. Bring the budget down. So I, I do work in the corp, I did actually volunteer to teach yoga here, but nobody got back to me. I work in the corporate sector as well, so I don't have a lot of time. And as I said, I'm a single mom, so I don't have a lot of time, but I did. I saw that, you know, the children are suffering from the pandemic. They're really suffering. And I used to live in New York City, and I used to teach at the Museum School in New York City, so I called here and I told them my experience. I think, I think I said, you know, I can forward you my yoga resume, but nobody got back to me, so that was good. But now I don't have time. I just don't, because I work full-time. I work for a subsidiary, one hundred and flowers, so it's great because I work with flowers. And I love flowers. I guess the last thing, I'm, I'm just, I'm floored. I'm kind of disgusted. I'm kind of disgusted. Like this gentleman here, I'm kind of disgusted. But I'm a yoga teacher, so I'm not going to go any further. Namaste, everyone. Slava Ukraini. Hola, Slava.
Thank you. Rebecca Weaver.
Good evening. My name is Becky Weaver. I'm a lifelong resident of Weathersfield and proud to call Twenty Carriage Hill Drive my home. Having grown up in this community, I've always known and appreciated nostalgia and tradition. I was thrilled when my husband agreed to settle in a neighborhood that allowed for our future children to attend the same school I did over thirty years ago. I'm here tonight to share my concern that our district's vision for our graduates has not been reflected in recent budgets. Education in twenty twenty-three is a phenomenon that is in the category of its own. Light years away from the days of direct instruction where one teacher stood before a classroom and pulled lessons from a textbook. The current perception of education and its fiscal needs is antiquated and needs another look. We need to do better to fulfill our district's vision and mission with fidelity. And that is contingent upon passing this budget and continuing to invest in our town for years to come. We need to effectively prepare our students with twenty-first century skills that include problem-solving, critical thinking, and the exponential advancement in technology, and how it relates to the world around us. Student learning is no longer confined to brick and mortar. And the integration of technology is no longer an add-on, it's a permanent fixture. We need to get past the idea that technology's sole purpose is to provide access to information. It's also a tool, a conduit of connectivity. It allows for opportunities for collaboration between stakeholders and beyond. When other districts like South Windsor, West Hartford, Glastonbury, Cheshire, Hamden, were building up their tech support and adding library, media specialist positions in each school, we were cutting ours. Our devices are piecemealed and not compatible with existing technologies. Our elementary schools no longer have space or supervision for computer labs when, again, other districts are supplementing these spaces with STEM labs and corresponding specialists. Weathersfield Public Schools strives for inclusivity in our multicultural community. We prioritize equitable opportunities for our students and their families, but we're falling behind in funding this area. In the last three years, we have seen an incredible amount of forcibly displaced populations due to persecution, conflict, violence, human rights violations, and disturbing public order. According to a recent presentation to the Board of Education by the Multi-Language Department, today, one in three Weathersfield Public School students, or thirty-two percent, come from homes fortunate to use multiple languages. The composition of our community is changing, and we need to respond with additional resources and support for these students as our L teachers and tutors' caseloads are bursting. We are also falling behind neighboring districts such as Newington, Glastonbury, and South Windsor, who offer foreign language prior to seventh grade. These districts recognize the importance of learning another language, how it increases cognitive development, critical thinking skills, memory, all the good stuff. It also offers children a better understanding of their native language and an enriched experience of other cultures. Students in twenty twenty-three are resilient. They have to be. They practice responses to school violence regularly. And with the collaborative efforts of our police and fire departments, again, this is our district using our resources to the maximum. And while this collaboration between departments is effective, it falls short of the training and the practice of current safety measures that are being utilized by other districts in our state. We have a responsibility to our current and potential residents to provide the most up-to-date practices that ensure safe schools, particularly since our buildings are inadequate in this area. A building constructed in nineteen sixty-seven can hardly withstand an act of violence, with external doors in each classroom and shattering glass windows to boot. Maintaining safety also encompasses our children's social and emotional well-being. Today, our school system is charged with the responsibility of reaching our students holistically and on multiple levels to help them be accessible for learning. This type of instruction is in addition to curricula and has not been calculated in previous budget years. I became a high-cost bulldog in nineteen eighty-six, and in thirty-seven years, very little has changed. My three children and I have now shared the experience of walking the same halls, eating in the same cafeteria, and playing in the same gymnasium. Sure, it contributes to a strong sense of sentimentality, and while reminiscing is fun, it also illuminates the fact that our schools have not grown and evolved with the rest of us. Despite our budget remaining flat over the past several years, our teachers have made up the difference, and our award-winning schools are still academically competitive. In fact, our graduation rate has increased by four percent to ninety-five percent over the last five school years. This comes at a cost to our teachers. If you ask an educator in town how much they pay out of pocket to enrich their students' experiences, you'll find that the amount is in the hundreds. And while I say enrich, I'm really just referring to the engaging lessons that keep our kids coming to school. The activities that boost attendance so we can be academically competitive. Weathersfield Public Schools should not have to rely on teacher or family donations, federal or state grants, or donors choose projects just to meet our students' basic needs. The Weathersfield Public School student expenditure is less than the state median. As I stand here this evening, our district ranks twenty-second out of twenty-four in our District Reference Group, or DIRK, third from the bottom. We would have to spend an additional twenty-one hundred per student just to meet the average spending in our DIRK. Just south of us, Rocky Hill, ranks number one. How do you think it impacts our property value? We have an opportunity to shift our thinking and adapt a more modern approach to school funding. How can we catch roof leaks, how long can we catch roof leaks with buckets in the classroom, or place construction cones over crumbling walkways, or continuously epoxy over broken asbestos floor tiles? Just as these Band-Aids are not sustainable, neither are the incredible efforts to triage our inadequate resources. Our budget does not guarantee student achievement. This I know. What it does do is help to provide a safe, equitable, relevant opportunity for our students to reach their full potential. Excuse me. Our allocation does not currently match the vision of the graduate. We have a lot of work to do just to catch up to our comparable towns. Stretching the dollar at the expense of our greatest investment is no longer acceptable. Passing this budget will help. Beyond that, we need to push for an adequate increase each year that moves Weathersfield from a reactive district to a proactive district and a leader within our state. With your support, ye most ancient town doesn't have to be stuck in the past. Thank you for your time.
Alexandria Slaney. Did I pronounce that right?
Slaney, yes. Good evening, deputy mayor and council members. My name is Alexandra Slaney, and I reside at three four six Prospect Street. I moved to Weathersfield about five years ago, and Weathersfield very quickly became my home. I view this budget, which I agree is a maintenance budget, as an investment in our communal home. Thus, I stand in favor of this budget. In particular, I support this budget in relation to the schools and the library. Our schools and library make up the heart and soul of this community, and that is a home to all of us. Thus, I encourage you to join me in supporting this investment in our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Drew. You don't have to come up.
I know. Can I speak in front of people? All right, Amanda Drew, three four zero Wolket Hill Road. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Board of Ed Budget, and full disclosure, I am a member of the Board of Ed, and I'm also the Chair of the Finance Committee. I take this budget process very seriously, and I'm confident that this budget is responsible and needed. During our deliberations, we invited all stakeholders to the table, including the town council, and we appreciated the deputy mayor attending. We had the principals and other administrative staff come and talk about their schools, their needs, desires, and issues surrounding a post-COVID education. We discussed the drastic increase in absenteeism, the lower test scores in math and reading, the difficulties children have with socializing norms, the massive spike of anxiety and mental difficulties in our students, and the basic educational slide that all schools, not just in Weathersfield, are experiencing. Because of these discussions and issues, and of the issues that the board has been made aware of this past year, we decided that we had to address the mental health and special ed issues gripping our district. We cannot educate a child that is in the midst of a mental health concern. We all know, even with ourselves, that our ability to concentrate or get things done is remarkably less when we are in full anxiety mode. So just imagine being a child and not having the skills to fully express yourself because you're just seven, or thirteen and hormonal, or even a high schooler who's only looked at the screen for the last two years of their high school career. We are asking these children to go back to a normal they don't even remember. The board took it upon themselves to address these concerns. The board decided to increase the superintendent's requested budget to include a social worker to begin the wellness center at the middle school, resource teachers split at the elementary schools, and special ed teachers at various schools due to caseload. Special ed continues to increase. Our district has five hundred and twenty students that have disabilities, which include autism, emotional disabilities, and intellectual disabilities, which is fourteen percent of our population. The population does not decrease, and I believe that that is a testament to the programs that Weathersfield has. We have become a town that families wish to move to because of the education and programs we offer, all in an attempt to integrate these children back into a neurotypical population. We are saving money when we have the resources to keep these kids in Weathersfield and not send them to private outfits. Some of these private programs can cost well over a hundred thousand dollars a year for one student. It makes fiscal sense to invest that in our district. We are also implementing a new math program. I sat in the crowd when you questioned the superintendent about the purchasing of the old Go Math. My counter to purchasing that system's right is to look at the numbers and tell me if the programs should still remain. In the twenty-eight nineteen, twenty-eight eighteen nineteen school year, only fifty-eight percent of students were meeting or exceeding math requirements. Post-COVID, we went down to forty-five. Since twenty fourteen, we have never gotten to sixty. I personally don't believe Go Math should be in Weathersfield, period. I've spoken to my daughter's teacher, and the positives to this new program is that it engages the students in talking about math, has the kids get up out of their seat and collaborate, discuss, and solve problems together. This is the type of learning that our children need for their future. The rope memorization of facts worked while we were growing up, but the math these kids will need for their future jobs is not the math I needed for mine. Being on the board and having children attend these schools, I can tell you that the anxiety that our children are suffering with is real and can be debilitating. My oldest was in middle school during COVID. And being a middle schooler is tough enough, but to add what, what they had to deal with, you can clearly see they all suffered. I never thought that I would have to deal with attempted suicide, therapy, medications, or having to have mock conversations to teach her how to speak to people, but here we are. But I consider myself lucky because I'm an advocate, I'm a loudmouth, but I'm an advocate, and I have the resources to get the help that she needs. Most cannot. During COVID, we scared our children about an invisible monster. We forced them to hide from the world and told them communication is the only, it can be only through a screen. be only through a screen. Now, we are telling them to go back to normal. But what is their normal? My daughter was in kindergarten when COVID began, and all she has ever known was computer screens and face masks. That's her normal. These kids have gone through some very formative years living with anxiety. But how can we help them? We must be able to quell this anxiety in order for them to learn at all. Our goal on the Board of Ed is to give these kids an excellent education, and we cannot reach these kids if we cannot help them overcome their mental health and actually attend classes to start learning. We have seen the positives that the Wellness Center has begun to bring to the high school and feel that the middle school needs this too. We need to help these kids as early as possible to give them a safe place where they can learn. The earlier we can intervene and help these kids, the better off they will be. I'm not typically someone who actually works hard to try to increase a budget, but that's what I'm doing now. I can fully support a budget that uses the money in a way that improves infrastructure, maintains what we already have, and improves the lives of those living in town. I believe this budget and our additions do just that. This budget invests in the child and not the system. A member of the Town Council recently said, and I'm paraphrasing, that a new desk or new school does not make the education, but what inside does. I 110% agree, and I think that this budget works towards that. We are actually investing in the child by helping them to combat their mental challenges so that our teachers can do what they do best: educate. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Doug Soudel of 323 Main Street. I'm new to the town, and my daughter's actually gonna follow me, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be brief. But I wish, I mean, Ms. Weaver just laid things out in a way that I wish I could, and I thank you for that. It was absolutely phenomenal. I've been observing, we're, again, new to town, I've been trying to sort of wrap my head around all the challenges and put them into words, and she did in such an amazing and thoughtful way. We need to invest in our students, and this budget does not do that at the level that our students need, but it certainly does what can be done in this time. And so I applaud Mr. Emmett, the whole team, the Board of Ed, and certainly the whole education, I mean, all the teachers and staff and support folks that have been working so hard under such difficult circumstances. And I encourage all of you to support the education budget and more broadly the budget because we need to make these investments and we need to make these improvements. And it's been clearly laid out by Ms. Weaver, Ms. Weaver, that we're not doing the same as our peer towns, our neighbors. And we need to work to excel the quality of our education and focus in this area. And I hope as time goes on, we can continue to make that effort. My daughter is in second grade at Hamner, and I, and my son will be starting in Hamner next year, and I don't know anything more important than investing in the education of this town. I own property in another town. I pay taxes there. I support the education there as well, and I very comfortably do that, knowing that the kids throughout the state of Connecticut will ultimately be the ones taking care of all of us. And so the investment is something we need to make, as difficult as it is, and it by no means meets the needs, but it is the best, it seems, we can do at this given time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Bailey, come on up. You lower the microphone a little bit. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bailey Soudel. I live at 323 Main Street. I love Hamner School. It's a great place to be and learn. I would really like you to support the budget because we need more teachers to help with social, emotional learning, to help with how your mind works and how you react to your feelings. I think this is very important, and that's why you should support the budget. Thank you. Go Hamner Owls! Hoot, hoot!
Mary Kay Jensen.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Hi, I'm Mary Kay Jensen. I'm 23 Quail Hill. There's a lot to take in tonight, and as always, I don't have anything prepared, but, you know, I was really influenced by what Mr. Bob said. I do drive around town, and I just see a lot of empty businesses. And I hate that every year I have to get up here and beg for teachers to have what they need, for libraries to have what they need, and the Town Rec Program, I know I've seen Rachel, I don't know if you're still with them, but those are affordable summer camps so parents could work. I don't even know why I'm crying. I just, I hate doing this. This is not what I like. And I wish that the majority of the year, you all would work harder to figure out, like, if you were to go on Facebook, you would just hear people keep saying, like, "When is that pizza place coming in?" And "Why is this building?" And "What's going on with regulations? Old Weathersfield won't let any..." And, like, all those details don't get figured out. And then in May, we all have to, like, text each other, like, "Bring your friends, bring your children." Oh, I know it's past their bedtime. Like, she should be in bed reading books. She shouldn't be here. And it was really cute, and I love that you were here, so I'm so proud of you, and you really represent our schools, but you shouldn't have to be doing this. This should be like us, and it should be you guys doing everything you can to make sure every vacant building is filled, so that we are not nickel-and-diming the library, which is providing free resources, places where people can find jobs. It's the only way I've been able to get books into my kids' hands. That's what we're doing, is we're nickel-and-diming the school system. And then just the rest of the year, I don't know what's happening to those buildings, but they've been vacant for years. And I too have, my parents are moving from New Jersey to Connecticut and on a fixed income, so I'm thinking about that, too. I don't want it to be all these school parents against elderly people on fixed incomes. We all have our own different needs, and we need different things, and I respect, and the roads need to be paved. I mean, it's not an either-or, but I think that it was a really wonderful point you made. There's so many empty buildings and loss of tax revenue, and it's affecting our schools. And we do need social workers. The only way that I know how to support teachers is to give them as much help as they can. And those social workers, the psychologists, they, their caseloads are enormous right now. The teachers are exhausted. The music department, that is my son's brain gym. It is not, I just went to a wonderful concert at the high school. My son played in it. And it was wonderful to see what those seniors could do, but we don't get to that level with broken machines or broken instruments at the elementary school level and just put Band-Aids on and tell them to make do. So I think I'm rambling at this point, but I'd like for you to think about what you can do on your end so that we are not bringing children to these meetings begging for the budget to be passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Solbo. I live at 72 Dix Road. I'm here as a parent, as a lifelong Weathersfield resident, and as the interim president of the special ed PTO. I want to encourage you to pass this school budget in full. I actually think it needs to be more, but I know that that may be unrealistic in these economic times. I just want to point out specifically one thing that I noticed in this school budget. The amount of money, or maybe it was in the town budget, I'm sorry, but the amount of money being spent to outplace our students because we can't meet their needs. And the reason we can't meet their needs is because we're not investing in education the way we should be. We shouldn't have to pay over $100,000 outplacement per student when we could be taking that money and hiring additional special education teachers. This is just, it's ridiculous. I honestly, I don't know the figure. Maybe Jim Riley could expound on the figure for how much we actually spend for outplacement, but my son is special education. I chose to not outplace him. I chose to put my trust in this school system and have him be retained in Weathersfield as a special ed student, when it really was my prerogative to have him outplaced. I believe in the Weathersfield school system. I went through the Weathersfield school system, my parents did, my grandparents, my siblings, I can't tell you how many of my family members, but, and we continue to live here, even though it's really getting beyond expensive to live in this town. But I want to see the Board of Education budget passed as is and really take a good look at why do our parents feel the need to outplace our students with special education needs? There can be a huge, huge savings to the budget, Board of Ed, town budget, and just a whole increase in the morale of parents, of townspeople, to include these students in the whole town community. So please pass this time.
Martha Keneely.
I'm here to express my support for the library, schools, and town services. I'll start with the library, who is requesting approximately 1.7%, and that's a bipartisan, unanimously passed budget by the library board, that really just meets contractual obligations. And I think we all understand that Brooke always brings forward, you know, a budget that is to the penny, and she needs every penny of it. And so I would just, the one thing I would just caution is any kind of short-sighted assumption that this is a sustainable level of budgeting for the library. For the last several years, we've been requesting a, an investment in the RFID system. So this is our check-in, check-out system, and that has, once again this year, not been budgeted for as part of capital improvements. But that's one of those systems that create efficiencies at the budget. It's reflected, you see that reflected in the fact that we've been able to maintain labor costs at a certain level over years. But if that breaks, then you're going to see that efficiency go away. And then, so that's one thing, but even with that, we still see increases. But if we were able to not only replace our check-in system, which is the check-out system, that's a check-out system, which is at the end of its lifespan, there's also a check-in system that could be added that would add further efficiencies and would be a way to maintain some efficiencies there. And that kind of speaks to this whole issue of when we make these kinds of investments, we see these long-term savings. It's the same thing as the Mason. Let's hire that Mason so that we can repair all the things and save hundreds of thousands of dollars that we would have spent elsewhere. And so I just, you know, as, I would encourage, I don't, I know there's not room this year, but that that's something that you keep on your radar in terms of the library. You know, in terms of the schools, I definitely, I have been watching with great interest the use of the ARPA funds that have been invested for student athletes, 20% for the athletic facilities. I just want to point out that the headline of that term, "Student Athlete," is "student." And I would just ask that we make the same commitment to the student side of that equation as we're making to the athlete side of that equation. And that just to remember that we're called on not only to support our student athletes, but our student artists, our student engineers, our student programmers, our students with different learning abilities, our students who need to learn or are learning English as an additional language. But for anyone who needs to hear it, I would just also add that the quality of our schools is a huge driver of the quality of our, of the, of the value of our properties. This, just for the last few years, I no longer have children in the schools, but I fully support strong schools in our community because that absolutely, the value of my home is contingent upon that. And the ability for us to attract businesses to our community and to do a lot of this economic development that we all recognize will help to shift the tax burden off of all of us and bring businesses to our community, that's partially, that has a lot to do with the quality of our schools. But then also, I would support restoring full funding for all of these capital improvements and really increasing the funding that we put in infrastructure on the town side and making a, as much of an investment as we can in economic development. I'm sorry that more of our ARPA funds have not been focused on those transformational changes, those long-term changes that could bring that kind of economic development into our community. It is, it is, it is the key to making that shift, and it has to do with the shift, and I are thinking about how the, that we, $900,000 is not enough. That is a Band-Aid. $1.2 million is going to still be a Band-Aid. If we were making the real investments year over year over year over year, we would not only be attracting businesses to our community, we would be attracting families to our community. We would be avoiding a lot of the costs that have driven us to have, to require fixes to our schools that's going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars in a bond referendum if we'd had the foresight over many years with both teams in charge of saying we need to be investing more in our schools and our infrastructure. And so let's learn a lesson from that and make those kinds of changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Riley, please.
Hi, Beth Riley, 12 Hubbard Place. Thanks so much to our Board of Ed and Town Council volunteers for serving for our town. I'm here to voice my support for the Board of Ed school budget, library budget, as well as Parks and Rec. I want to thank all my kids' teachers. We have so many wonderful and competent teachers here in Weathersfield. As a special ed teacher in another town, I can tell you that special education teaching positions have become immeasurably harder in recent years. In addition to the mental health issues coming out of the past three years, special ed teachers have had to learn an entirely new state IEP database system with virtually no training and in real time on a system that was clunky and dysfunctional. This meant that writing a typical IEP went from about one and a half to two hours to up to four to five hours per student, per IEP meeting. Caseloads have increased dramatically, so the more students on the caseload, the more meetings, and the more IEPs to write. This was by the state, by the way. They rolled it out when they should have waited, clearly. There's a huge teacher shortage in There's a huge teacher shortage in special ed in this state and nationally, partly due to this issue. The only way to incentivize teachers right now is to lower caseloads. There are no bonuses in teaching, no sign-on incentives, not a ton of systemic perks. People are leaving the profession in droves, but if we can hire more special ed teachers and social workers, as outlined in this budget, then that lowers the caseload of current teachers and social workers. This is all you can do to keep these teachers right now. The library budget and Parks and Rec budget should also be fully funded. Going to the library and picking up activity bags were some of the activities that kept my family going during the pandemic lockdown. Our library and Parks and Rec program is robust and constantly evolving with the times. I cannot say enough good things about both programs. On a seemingly unrelated issue, but one I think is actually very closely tied to tonight's subject, I recently read the Internal Affairs report on the Weathersfield Police Department. I was absolutely appalled by the issues outlined in this report, and I implore the public to read it. It's on the police department website. To briefly summarize it, there were police officers doing things that were at best considered unprofessional, but really these acts were criminal. Police officers fully on duty while crimes were being committed, driving to their houses, parking in their garage for hours at a time, 172 times. Police officers leaving their department-issued guns on the seats of their unlocked cars and getting stolen. A police officer driving himself drunk to a Hartford bar after a DUI demonstration put on by Weathersfield Police. Other towns are laughing at this. I've talked to numerous Hartford police officers who have said, "How were these people not immediately fired?" As a taxpayer in this town, I'm angry about this, but if I were a teacher in this town, I would be enraged. This police budget comes from the same pool as some of the special education teachers that I spoke of earlier. I don't know what the repercussions are of this report that recently came out, but I wish that these police officers would be held accountable and their pensions should be put back into our schools and libraries. It is embarrassing and disgusting that these things were going on in our town. They were known about and they were not held accountable. I totally agree with the comments earlier about vacant buildings and bringing businesses into our town. I really hope we can do everything in our power to incentivize new businesses to coming into our town. To summarize, I'm in support to fully fund our schools, libraries, and parks of recs. I also implore everybody to read that report on the police webpage. I hope these people are held accountable, and it would be great if we could go after their pensions and put them into the school budget. Thank you.
Kim Bobbin, please.
Kim Bobbin, 83 Longview Drive. I won't keep you. I know we've been here for a long time. I've been in Weathersfield for 20 years now. I've been to many of these budget hearings. This is by far my favorite, I have to say. One of my favorite things to say about Weathersfield is it doesn't matter if you're Democrat or Republican, if you're young or old, we love our town. We all do. And I know that our schools and our superintendent and our town manager want to do the best for us. I know that these budgets were created with due diligence. They have done their best. Believe me when I tell you, hours have been spent on this and lots of staff time. So I respect the budgets that you've put forward and just want to let you know, as a resident, I support them. Thank you.
Cindy Jacobs.
Cindy Jacobs, 71 Sunrise Terrace. I thank you. I'll speak first about the school budget. I want to thank Superintendent Emmett and the Board of Ed for putting together a realistic budget. And it's a no-frills budget, as many have said. It just merely recognizes the increases in salaries and benefits that reflect economic conditions this year. It reflects the need for more social workers and more special ed teachers, as we've said, to support the teaching staff and recognize the support system that students need and, as I found, can save the town money and keep children in the community and support it here. Our school ministers have been resourceful in obtaining outside funding for a wellness center in the middle school. So any cuts to this budget, I will say also, as Mr. Emmett pointed out, it provides limited but critical curriculum and materials, instruments, and so on. So I think they've been selective in prioritizing. So any cuts to this budget will take the muscle and not the fat. Will take out the muscle and not the fat in the public schools. My children are no longer in school. My last, my youngest graduated in 2012. So even though I don't have children in the school, it is our responsibility to support our schools, and it's an endowment we give to the next generation. Supporting our public education is a responsibility to all of our, all of us in our community, and it benefits all of our community, and it's a sign of a healthy community that we support our schools. So please support this budget as is. The town portion of the budget, I thank the town manager, Presley, for, I think, putting together a responsible budget. I think the town side has taken a lot more hits this evening than the school side, but I think I respect, I respect the effort to make capital improvements, strategic investments, to plan and budget for the future and improvement of our town. There's been a lack of maintenance, of capital improvements, and so on over the, over the decades. And this budget tries to address that. So it also recognizes, and as people have recognized, the need for retaining teachers and so on, similar efforts have to be made on the town side to try to keep competent people on board. So I hope that the town, the town manager and the town councillors can work together and try to develop a budget, work with that, and develop a budget that can satisfy the ability of the town to pay. And to the effort of the things that were said about economic development, I sit on the Economic Development Board. We work, we try to work very hard to achieve many of these goals, and we have Councillor Pentolo and Councillor Lesser who also attend, and our town manager's been very proactive. So we are doing our best to try to incentivize and grow the economic base of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine Rivera.
My name is Jasmine Rivera. I reside at 38 Follibrooke, and my daughter loves web. She likes. I like school. I'm in support for the school budget. However, I'm not in support of raising the tax dollars on single families and seniors. I think education is very important, and this town has a lot of diversity, and there are a lot of issues that's going on in the school system. And I think that educating and funding and getting all the right people in there to educate, not only the students, but also some staff and parents as well, is needed. Again, Mr. Emmett, this budget we are in support of, but again, not on the, again, the seniors and the single parents. So I'm hoping that there's a way to balance it out without having to have us, you know, I've been here for 10 years since New York City. I am a single mom. I work overtime, and I love this place. This town has welcomed me with open arms. Anything I need, I found the resources for it. If I had a problem, if I didn't get the answer, I call the town hall and they direct me to all the right places. Again, with raising taxes, it makes it a little bit more challenging, a little bit more difficult. So that means I'm out in the community doing what I need to do so that my daughter has a brighter future, she has a chance to get in the education that I believe that she's entitled to. And I just really hope that we can all work together as a community and get to that. Thank you, and this is my first time.
Thank you. Robert Young.
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. First of all, when I received my budget book, I already knew that 5.85% was what the Board of Education was asking for. I wasn't aware that the town was looking for 7.85 or 6.75% increase, which really set me back. Matter of fact, the whole budget set me back. You know, I keep coming to these meetings, year after year, listening to the same stories, how we need money, how we need money for our school system. You know, we keep hearing now, well, I've been hearing for years, we need more Chromebooks. We need more Chromebooks because they're only five or six or seven years old, or whatever they are. Hell, when I, my own computer says 2007 on it when the screen pops up, and that was new back then. So I don't understand why we have to keep replacing Chromebooks. Children are only using them. It's not adults. It's children that are using them. They're not using them very much, yet they got to be replaced constantly. We hear about, we're now hearing about Gold Math, or whatever in the world that was. Yeah, I heard about Gold Math some few years ago. Now it's heading out the door to be replaced with something else. Obviously, we don't really know what we want in our school system. And our school system itself, 15, 20 years ago, when I was attending your meetings, you had approximately 3,600 students at that time, and today that's what you have, approximately. When you add up the numbers, you're like 36, 3,628 now. The only thing that's gone up with the Board of Education is the cost, and the cost just keeps rising, and there is no end to it. You're given money to take care of the properties that you made, that you had, and you didn't take care of them. And that's why you need referendums all the time. But the fact remains, you keep building your headcount, building your headcount, and the citizens, I don't think that, someone said tonight, Weathersfield is number three from the bottom of the DRG group, right? When I attended 15, 20 years ago to the town council meetings, I should say the Board of Education meetings, they were in the middle. Since then, they've dropped, and the cost has gone up. So when you start looking at a graph, it doesn't look good for our educators. If our students' results are dropping, why is it costing us more money? Maybe we got to get new educators right from the top? Maybe we got to get, got to unload people? And as far as the town side goes and the board side, we should lose a number of heads. Look, in my own house, my own property, I was going to buy two new garage doors before COVID, and then COVID came, and the price was way up. I still have those old doors, not going to replace them. That's how the town should operate, but not the town. They have to have brand-new everything. And everything cost a heck of a lot of money for the citizens. So anyway, I just wanted to make that statement about the Board of Education. I think they should reduce their headcount. Someone had come up here tonight and said that they were Democrat, they were independents and this and that. Well, I'm not even one of them. And I'll tell you this, I have not voted for a Board of Education person in over 25 years, and I can almost say that about the town council, and I come here for every meeting. I wouldn't give them a vote. Not one of those people represent my interests at all. They're all lousy. And the Board of Education, I used to go to their meetings. I says, "No more." One day, I just stopped going. So anyway, I'm here tonight to talk about the budget. And as we talk about, I talk about the budget, I'm going to talk about some items. You know, first of all, a house that has a value of $175,000, and the rate is going to go up, $479. That's a heck of an increase. I think last year, if I voted down some more, it was half that, but this year it's more. How about the person that owns a $600,000 house or an $800,000 house? I know that person doesn't really care, it's only money, but still, the fact is, his rate is going to go sky-high as well, okay? And we hear about the inflation. Inflation is because of this group right here. Inflation is because of our Board of Education. They have driven everything up. Look, they just got $7.5 million from the federal government for APRA or APRA, or whatever the hell they call it. Board of Education got, what, $2.5 million? And our taxes are going up the way they are? It doesn't make sense. My understanding was that the money was given to the states, who in turn were supposed to give it to the towns to help the people reduce their taxes. Didn't happen, did it? Didn't happen. People like this, right here, they, all they got to do is, they're investing the $7.5 million in spirits. God damn! Where are roads? Have you ridden our roads? Our roads are in horrible shape. They got their $1.5 million for a turf field. They got more things and more things and more things. I got a whole list of them here. But the fact remains, this year, our budget is going to go up something, and right now it's being proposed at 7.6, 7.6.75 on the town side and 5.85 on the board side, which is going to give us a nice increase that's going to drive a lot of people out. It's not only going to drive people out, some people will stay and struggle more. You know, there's a, on page 1.3, there's, there's a little schedule, a little graph that shows bonded debt service. And it shows that the bonded debt service has been going down over the last two years. But the town of Weathersfield went out on leases for $893,000. When you start bringing those leases in there, it doesn't show like you lost much. Hasn't gone down much. And what's deceiving, what's really deceiving, and I spent time trying to figure this thing out, and the manager didn't tell us tonight, how much do we owe in long-term debt? Remember, folks, we just had a referendum, but failed. I voted against it. Remember this? The way I got it figured, I got the wrong page. We are a round, full- We are awarded 40 some, 32 million dollars currently in long-term debt. And I learned saying that from memory. And you won't find that number in this book, and that's wrong. But I've also said, this, this, this town that everybody loves so much has no transparency. Everything is hidden, and it will be continued hide, hidden. But again, come back to the, let's come back to long-term debt. We got roughly 32 million dollars that we continue to owe. It might be 38 because you made a payment in 2023, or you haven't made the payment in 2023. I'm not sure if you did or didn't. But the fact remains, and I'm talking from memory, if we took, say, 38 million dollars that we owe, and you remember, we just had a big referendum that failed, thank goodness. That referendum was gonna add 168 million to the existing 38 or 39 million, okay? That would've brought us up to owing in debt, 200, and a rough number, 200 million dollars. And a lot of you people, I'm sure, voted in favor of that referendum. Yeah. 200 million dollars you would've made us pay for whatever, over the, over 20 years, right?
Mr. Young, 10 minutes, so.
My 10 minutes are up, or I have a few more minutes to go?
Well, you're already at 11.
I'm already on, I'm, I'm beyond, huh?
So if you could come back at the second round.
I understand I can come back more than, more than three times, right?
We'll go through the second round and see where we stand.
I can come back, I'll be back.
Thank you. Emily Zambrello. If I say it right?
Good evening, councilors, Mr. Town Manager. My name is Emily Zambrello. I'm a lifelong resident in Weathersfield, and I live at 72 Village Drive, number 314. I'm here to speak in support of your, this year's proposed budget. I appreciate the town's goal of maintaining current service levels and replacing funds that were temporarily covered by ARPA. I am happy to see that there are still some minor new expenses being considered, two of which I find especially worthwhile, and while I have many comments, I will limit myself to these two items. I'm a member of the Weathersfield Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities, and at our last meeting, we were joined by John Mills from the Town Engineers Office. John told us about the proposed Sidewalk Repair Matching Fund Pilot Program, which the Town Manager mentioned earlier, and is included in the Town Engineers Budget for $25,000. The goal is to encourage property owners to make needed sidewalk repairs. I think this program is a great idea that could provide significant benefit to property, property owners and pedestrians and advance our progress towards mobility and connectivity at a relatively low cost. Sidewalks in disrepair are dangerous, they're costly to homeowners, and they're potentially costly to the town in the event of injuries. They're also a problem for disabled residents and visitors. On several occasions, I have witnessed wheelchair users wheeling in the streets in areas where sidewalks are in disrepair. I walk with a cane, and I have difficulty navigating sidewalks when they're broken or uneven. It results in me having to stare at my feet while I'm walking, and it makes me feel less safe because I'm staring at my feet instead of being aware of my surroundings. I'm hopeful that the town will continue to invest in the safety of our walkways and improving accessibility town-wide so that everyone, not just those who can navigate easily, can enjoy all our town has to offer. I'm also supportive of the $1,500 line item for the Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities in the Parks and Recreation Budget. Our committee currently relies on fundraising and donations to give out $250 scholarships to kids for programs and small grants to help fund projects with, which promote independent living. This is a small expense from the town that will allow us to directly help more residents. In the future, I would love to see this number grow, but it's a good start. These two items have the potential to make a positive impact far greater than their cost. They may be minor expenses compared to the rest of the budget, but these are often the first on the chopping block, and I wanted to speak to their impact. I ask that you include them in the approved budget. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Colleen Bolingbroke.
Hi, Colleen Bolingbroke, 254 Fox Hill Road. Um, I just wanna speak really quickly, and as a school district, say that we really do need to remain competitive, especially with the other towns in our area. I know we lose families to them who wanna go and have some access to the better schools, better services that Mrs. Weaver was talking about. Um, but we need to support the budget as is without any cuts for the schools because we need to keep offering good competitive salaries for our teachers, who so deserve it. We need to make sure that the teachers have adequate technology and resources, and so do our students, that they are able to do the updating of our curriculums, which we so desperately need, and that they have good working environments, which many do not because the schools are crumbling under them. But we need to do what we can right now. Um, not many people are going, not as many people are going into teaching these days, as Beth Riley pointed out, and we need to be able to attract new teachers, but we also need to be able to keep the current teachers we have, who work so hard for our kids and do so much, and really are the reason that our kids are, our graduation rate is going up, and that our kids are doing okay because our teachers are so amazing in this town. And we wanna keep young families here who keep bringing in good tax dollars. So please, uh, support the Board of Education budget as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen Sayes.
Hello, my name is Carmen Malagro Sayes. I've lived here 21 years. Nobody loves Weathersfield and or Weathersfield more than me. I'm gonna give you an example of why I approved this budget, and I really think the real fail or the loss thing that everybody's not realizing is that when you said no to the referendum, it's like having a car that, that, um, the mechanic tells you the rotors, the brakes, the starter, and you just start, before you know it, you have all these pieces, and it becomes the entire car. And yes, you probably could walk around with a car that is always gonna need maintenance, but our students deserve better. And I have five, and you're like, whoa. And I'm five, three are little, and they're gonna be in the schools growing up, and they definitely need special education. My youngest is autistic, my other one is in tier one, and while the other one's a genius, he's a little hyper. So, and then my, my two elders have special ed. Uh, she, my daughter graduated from UConn, and she about to have her master's from Central, and she's a teacher at UConn, but she still needs special ed, and so does my son, who needs, about to get his associate. So education is the key. You really need to get this through somehow, and I'm praying magical blessings. But on top of that, go back to the referendum, cuz that's the real problem. You gotta go fix those buildings. Thank you, love you.
Thank you. Kathy Rodriguez.
Hello, everyone, Kathy Rodriguez. I reside at 45 Greenfield Street. Uh, I've been a resident for seven years here in Weathersfield, and forgive me, I am not a police officer. I am a school safety officer for the city of Hartford. Um, I thought that, this is actually my first time as well, and shame on me, right? But this is like a Friday night out here. I'm coming more often. This is insane, but I tell my husband, listen, buddy. I got somewhere to go. Pretty insane and pretty cool at the same time, so.
Did you see the line item for the popcorn? We have popcorn.
We can bring it, it's, yeah. Um, but, uh. Sorry. But I, I came in uniform because I came directly from work. Um, I didn't even get a chance to see my little one today, needless to say. Um, I chose coming over here rather than having to go home because I thought that it was that important. I support Mr. Emmett, I support the Board of Ed, I support Parks and Recs, I support the library, 150,000%. Um, I gotta tell you, before I was a, I was a school safety officer, or I am a school safety officer for the city, I worked at one location in Hartford for about six years. I was the school safety officer of the year for that year, I like to brag about that, so, you know, I kinda, for the whole district, so, you know. Um, but at that time, I transitioned over to judicial, and I became a juvenile detention officer. And I did that for a few years. Um, it was then that I realized the power behind the schools. Um, it, it was a hard transition, having to work in detention, uh, working with the youth, working with the juveniles. Uh, it kinda took a toll on me mentally. Uh, thank God that I'm, you know, pretty strong, built for it, let's just put it that way. But when you have a minute to kind of sit and process, you, I realized that I was kind of becoming a little overprotective with my little one because of the things that I saw, the things that I was dealing with. Um, I moved to Weathersfield for a reason, right? Um, so that my little one can go to the front yard and play and do all types of stuff. After working judicial, uh, being in there, all of that kinda changed. Um, so she couldn't play in the front yard, now you gotta go to the backyard, you know? And toys, I take them all out and whatever anyways. But the point is, is that I was kind of having a hard time with her. Um, and I wasn't getting a chance to see her as much because of mandates. Um, you know, I went in at, at 4 o'clock, and I didn't come back home till 4 o'clock the next day. Um, and I did that for a few years, you know? Thank God I have a very supportive husband, right? That, you know, took on a role of having to pick her up and homework and shower in bedtime. Um, I think he appreciated the fact that I wasn't there either, but that's the size of the point. Um, but when I used to drop her off at school, granted, she was kind of always late. Mr. Emmett, don't, you didn't hear that, but. She was always late. The principal that she has, I, I have to brag about him, I really do, and everywhere I go, I will. Uh, so she attends Charles Wright, uh, she's in the fourth grade. And I remember the one time that I literally had a breakdown, not gonna lie, had a breakdown. I pulled up, and Mr. Hoarder always knew that I was gonna be a few minutes late. And he was always there. And everybody would be inside already, but Mr. Hoarder would stand out there and wait that extra couple minutes for me to pull up with Sadie. And it was that one time that I pulled up, and Sadie gets out the car, and she's very animated and dramatic. That's the only thing that she has of me, so she's, you know, 100 animated. So she gets out the car, and she psh, storms and, you know, slams the door, and she walks away, and look at Mr. Hoarder, and I throw myself on top of the hood of the car. I can't, and he looks at me with that patience and says, "I promise you, it will get better." And with that being said, I drove off, I had to pull over, I called out, and I had my breakdown. And it was that one time that I realized how not only does the educational part role plays in Sadie and in my life and everybody else that she is around, but the emotional part of it as well. And I think this is the first time that I've actually had the, uh, interaction of dealing with Mr. Emmett. I specifically called his office, and I specifically left a message, and I said, "Can you please have Mr. Emmett return my call? I am a parent from Charles Wright." And I tell you, instantly, he returned my call, and I was blown away. I was actually on my way to, uh, go to work, it was 3:45, I was in the parking lot, and he calls. And we got into the conversation, and the purpose of my calling him was to let him know how much I appreciated his staff, how much I appreciated Mr. Hoarder for standing out there those extra five minutes, how much I appreciated Mr. Hoarder and the secretary that was there, who always took my call, and if Sadie was sick, she would sit there and say, "Call Dad, don't call Mom, she just got home from pulling 16 hours, call him." And I said, "I love you for that, thank you so much for, not only that, but for calling him, making him do it," you know? It was the support that I got from there, and to this very, very day, that support continues. And I remember passing that on to Mr. Emmett, and I said, "I don't know what you guys do nowadays, if you email or forward a letter, or if you typewrite, I don't know, I'm not into, you know, the technology type of stuff." So I said, "But the one thing that I will ask you to do, and is the reason why I'm calling you, is can you please call your staff and let them know how much they're appreciated?" You have a parent that called and said they appreciate you so much, and just like that, instantly, that man called, Mr. Hoarder, called the secretary, reached out to the staff, and reminded the staff how amazing they are for not only for the work that they do every single day, but for the support that they also offer to the parents. And I think to me, that is humongous. I live right across the street from the center, I live right across the street from camp. I live, you know, right across the street from where Sadie can just, you know, walk across the street and go to camp. And I remember telling the councilors there one time, which go councilors, all right, that she can be a walker. And they didn't kind of believe me until they saw me, maybe they thought I was crazy, and they didn't dare let her go or anything, right? But I told them, I said, "No, it's fine, she can walk." And they said, "Well, where did, where is she walking tonight?" I said, "Well, just right across the street." And even though I was in the car following, and she thought I was crazy, right? Like, "They're so embarrassing, can I just walk?" But I was there. The point is, is that the center, right, the, the, the Parks and Recs, the library, the budget proposal, I, I can't speak more highly of any other departments that you can invest into. And this is an investment for education, it's the reason why I moved here to Weathersfield, so that my child can get that education. I work with Hartford Schools. I see what education is out there. It's a big difference. It's a humongous difference. And I see the necessity, and I see also, because I'm in the field, of how we're dealing with the juveniles, how we're dealing with our cars, or juveniles being in town, or whether it's here or Rocky Hill, or just the little suburban areas. There's a reasoning behind their behavior, right? And 99% of it is lack of education. I don't want that for my kid. I came here for a reason, I am a taxpayer, and I don't care what goes up. If I have to pay higher taxes, guess what? Tell my husband, "Work some more overtime," right? If I have to, if anything else goes up, then guess what? It goes up. But I tell you one thing, I will sacrifice myself, sacrifice whatever it is that I have to sacrifice so that my little one can get the education that she deserves. And I believe that supporting this bill, supporting Parks and Recs, supporting the library, supporting these amazing staff, your town continues to move the way it moves because of them. And of course, because of you guys, I'm not taking anything away from you guys, but because of them. They are the ones that are helping with the social services, with the mental health, with the crisis, with whatever it is that parents need, whatever it is that we need, students need. We reach out to them, and we ask them, "Where can we get this info? Where would you guide me to? Where are you sending me to?" And they will sit there and say, "If I don't have the answer, I will return your call." And guess what? They do. They do. So because of them, we continue to live our rich life here in Weathersfield. So in support of the proposal, I support 100%. I hope that you guys can also, um, consider it as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosalyn Bravo Cavoli.
Rosalyn Bravo Cavoli, 311 Main Street. My son Enzo spoke earlier.
My son Enzo spoke earlier, he attends Hamner School, he loves all his teachers, I've been impressed with everybody there. Thank you, Mrs. Weaver, for speaking. Um, I think you depicted the problem very eloquently. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know, I fully support the school budget, please fully support Parks and Rec and the library budget. And I'm glad Enzo's not here right now, but, um, like one of the moms said, he's in bed where he needs to be. We shouldn't be coming out here begging you, asking you for the things our kids need. When he heard Mr. Emmett's presentation and he mentioned mental health, Enzo looked up at me, at me, and he said, yes, mental health. At the beginning of this year. Enzo was very anxious about a couple of things, and I did not dare ask the social worker at school, because I know she has her hands full. I have the means and I have the time, and I seek help somewhere else for him. But you have to be there for the kids who do not have that luxury at home. Our children are our most worthy investment. I'm a nurse practitioner at Connecticut Children's and Pulmonary. The kids that come to see me, come to see me for asthma, number one reason. I cannot tell you how many of them also have a mental health problem on their problem list. It is a vital need in our schools and in our community. I don't talk to my kids only about their asthma, I talk to them about other things, and I try to applaud their parents every day, because they are taking on more and more, just like our teachers do, every day in their classrooms. From our P2 meeting, um, it was brought to our attention, just like Mr. Emmett said, that at Hamner, we have sixty-five ESL students. Of the four hundred in the district, we have one certified teacher. Hamner has asked for another full-time teacher. We have had recent arrivals from Albania, Ukraine, Russia, Kazakhstan. We have to meet those needs. I myself, first generation Colombian, Peruvian, the one thing that my mother drove home, Carmen's not here, she went to high school with me, um, and my friend Doug went to, I have known him since third grade, and he could tell you the same thing, because he was at my house. My mom, the one thing she shoved down my throat every day was education. And that's how I got my mom out of poverty. I pay her taxes in Hartford, she lives in a condo that I bought. Because she deserves it, because I could do it, because she helped me to get there. And our parents are doing that every day. And our teachers, somebody believed in me, somebody sparked that interest, somebody made me love science. We need to support our teachers. Please support library budget, the Parks and Rec budget, when I'm working full-time this summer. I have signed Enzo up for a bunch of the Parks and Rec programs, so that he's not home all day, so that he's doing something productive, learning. My mom is ninety, bless her heart. Jesus, please take care of her. She picks up my, my son, Mrs. Weaver, seen her? She picks up my son still two days a week from me when I'm working, my mother-in-law picks him up one day a week from me. But there are families out there, just like mine, multi-generational, we depend on one another, but we need programs to be there for our kids. I don't know if I had anything else to say, but please support the budget, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I did have one more thing to say. It came back to me. The school referendum, I know it didn't go anywhere, and my mom was astonished, right? She's a teacher, she has nieces and nephews who are teachers in Columbia. How can a town not invest in their students and their education? She was floored that it didn't pass. You know what happens in Columbia when teachers don't get what they want? Even though it's a day off from school, if teachers are protesting, students wear their school uniforms and march with their teachers. They march with their teachers on a day off when they can be home? On the internet or just going around? They march with their teachers, because they believe in education. And I'm surprised that other students are not protesting. My dad was a victim of gun violence, he was shot in the back of his head because he was a store owner in Hartford. I don't want anybody else's family to be a victim of gun violence. I learned so much from my father because of what he went through, and so much from my mom. But let me tell you, when I walk by Hamner and I see those cafeteria windows, I fear and I, and I shudder sometimes, because it would just take one horrible event with those cafeteria windows, and our town would be decimated, heartbroken. I know some of you don't have children in this town, but do you want to know that somebody's baby was in that cafeteria and was a sitting duck for gun violence? I'm sorry. We deserve so much better than that. Thank you, good night.
Thank you. So, uh, that was the last person to speak that had filled out one of these cards. Is there anybody in the audience that has not spoken for the first time? If not, will, we can, oh, I'm sorry, come on up. And just your name and address for the record, so Sue can record it.
Oh, sure. Uh, Jane Roets, R-O-E-T-S, sixty-nine State Street.
Thank you.
Um, a two-year resident of Weathersfield, but my husband has been a teacher here for twenty-seven years, so we have had a, a, a love of Weathersfield for a very long time. Um, I'm fully in support of the budget. I know deeply that we all do the best that we can, and circumstances are hard, money is hard, I don't want my taxes to go up either, but we can either pay now to finally do the right thing and invest in this town and invest in the schools, or we can pay a lot more later, when we have a crisis in the school, when we have buildings that are falling apart, when we have sidewalks that are breaking, so we can put the money in now that we haven't been doing, right? We've been lagging behind and lagging behind and lagging behind, putting Band-Aids, um, I fully support you doing what you feel is best, and if it doesn't work out, we can vote, and we can choose new people to step in. So right now, we voted you in, and we're gonna, I'm gonna trust you to do the best to do your jobs, and same with the school board, and if I don't like the result, then I will campaign and vote somebody else in, because that's what we've asked you to do, is to do your job, so now you get to do your job, and, um, that's it, fully support the budget, thank you.
Thank you. So if anyone would like to speak a second time, if we can just form a line, uh, or on the side there, and, uh, come up to the podium and again, state your name and address for the record, and you have ten minutes. Thank you.
Should I start? Okay, I will, I will wait, and I won't take ten minutes, I promise. Bob Woodward, four fifty-six Middletown Avenue here in Weathersfield. Three things, the town manager mentioned MDC. They tied up our neighborhood pretty good a few years ago. What would it take to get Weathersfield out of MDC? I read the stuff in the paper that's going on with the chair of MDC. It feels like if we stay in there, we are gonna be in deep. If we can get Rocky Hill out too, could you join the water district that serves Cromwell? And I believe Middletown. Just a question, but is it worth checking out? One other thing about the mill rate. If it goes up, it will impact all of us with higher, who, who use services in Weathersfield, such as home heating oil, which we do. Every company in Weathersfield that sells gasoline, home heating oil, or groceries will have their mill rate put up, they'll pass it on to us. Last thing is for the revaluation, please do better than West Hartford and New Britain in terms of transparency. They put out a new mill rate and said, oh, it's lower than the old one, and yes, it was, but it raised the taxes, because the one thing they never found was the equal point. This is what last year's was, this was the, this is the equal point. Please be transparent and honest with us when we get to the, uh, revaluation, that would be appreciated by all of us, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll also be brief, uh, Quadro Boys, six thirty-nine Highland Street. A lot of people mentioned about, you know, their family history, so on and so forth. I just wanna say, my wife was born in Weathersfield, stayed here, and she won't make me leave, so she's probably been here longer than most of you people have been alive, um, so I have a good understanding of the town and so on and so forth. I've been here over forty years with her. Uh, we had three boys, none of them went to the public schools, we all went private. I know you all know that, I went to private schools along with my wife. So I've been supportive of paying for a lot of stuff that I don't get any real benefit from, from the town. Um, and so, but I'm supportive of it because it gave me the opportunities that I have of getting advanced degrees, you know, I'm a nuclear physicist, I don't know if a lot of people know that, but I know a lot of math, and I know a lot of things, and I've got a lot of background in, like, all the things that you talk about, electricity prices and all these other things, so on and so forth, pretty much an expert in the field. So when I look at, like, the situation we're in, I try to look at it from both sides. And my good friend Albert Einstein said, you know, the same level of thinking will not get you out of where you are, and that's the problem. We have a lot of institutional thinking that goes on here, a lot of people talk, they work for municipalities, work for state, you know, state doesn't run like a business, you know what I mean? Municipality doesn't run like a business, we have a hundred and twenty-three million-dollar budget, you know, if I wasn't bringing a return of fifty, sixty million, you know, I'd get fired, you know, from the things that I do. So you don't work in that kind of level, and I totally, totally appreciate that. But you also have to recognize that we are in probably the top ten mill rates in the state, and we compete with West Hartford and the cities. You're talking about economic development and buildings being empty? The bottom line is if you don't have jobs and you're not competitive, you're not gonna get anybody to fill those buildings. You people are still logic? I mean, I've said this like so many years, about it's illogical to expect people to come in when we're raising the cost of living here. That's illogical, that doesn't make any sense, okay? If you, if you did an experiment, they would throw you out, saying, what are you doing? So my feeling is that I had come with the fact that, you know, we needed to just get rid of everything, but then I saw Mr. Emmett's, um, presentation, and my best friend and his wife, my best friend runs the, uh, one of the larger systems, uh, for social workers, and his wife is the head of the district for special ed. And when I saw he put in the three special ed and he put the social workers in there, I mean, because all I do every day is hear about the problems that they have. State-generated problems with computer systems that don't work, they, they have issues here, they have issues there, and they've got major problems, I have to hear about a lot of them. And so in Weathersfield, I think we're lucky, because we're not even close to the problems that they have in some of these other major districts. And I commend you, Mr. Emmett, because you did find something in there that I think is really critical and necessary. And so on that side, I, I applaud you, and I think that's, that's really good, and you came up a lot, you were here, you're up here now with, with me, uh, but on the other side, the town side, you gotta do something, some of this doesn't make sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening again. My name is Robert Young, twenty Copper Mill Road. You have in, you have in the budget tonight, this restore the funding for the capital items and CNEF, and how you want one of what, two point one million dollars that you want to what, go out and bond, or put into the budget for this current year? But the fact is, where is, where are the general public getting anything out of all of that COVID, ten million dollars worth of money? Why don't you take, take some of that COVID money and replace it with something like, like this? You don't need more fields. I know you talk about them. Our population isn't, isn't increasing, it's same like the school. The population is not increasing. The only thing that increases that they want more and they, and don't grab as much as they can. Again, I don't have any friends here, I don't have any friends here either, maybe one, but the fact is, it's outrageous what, what they're asking for and what the town is asking for. You know, you can complain about your inflation, we get it too. The manager said tonight, that the utility bill, is it the electric bill, was it seven cents per kilowatt? What do we pay? And we pay taxes on top of that bill. You don't pay taxes on top of your, your seven cents. And it goes right down, it goes right down all of your bills, you pay no taxes. Every time we turn around, we're whacked. We're whacked, and then my town whacks me. And, and, and they don't care. My town couldn't care less. I've seen how you people operate. So anyway, I think, I think between the Board of Education and I think between the, the town side, we should lose heads. That's the only way out. Our population hasn't increased, their population hasn't increased. If they're calling for people to come to town, and these people come to town and cost us more money because they have children, and look, which child costs? Seventeen thousand dollars now, did I read? In, in, in the report? Why would, House doesn't pay seventeen thousand dollars in taxes, every one of them, and if they have two children, what a loss we get. Why do you invite these people? And then if they bring in other kinds of, uh, issues to the town, we have to pay for it. The, where's the sense? Is there, oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking to the Board, the Town Council, there is no sense up here. All you think about is votes. How many people you can bring to town to vote for you, because the old folks aren't voting for you? Look, when the top vote getter in this town only gets out of the reg, out of the registered voters of nineteen thousand, whatever that last number, a couple of numbers are, only nineteen percent, that's not much. Not much at all. There's a heck of a lot of people that don't vote for that top vote getter. That's why I can say, who votes for you? But anyway, I gotta come back to this budget tonight, and as I say, I, I believe that we need to take some of that A, A, ARPA money and, and, and take it off, off the books for all the giveaways and give it back to the citizens. Put, put some roads, do some roadwork with that money. I don't see any roadwork being done. And you know, Mr. Woodward was talking about Beaver Road. I've been complaining about Beaver Road when I go to that lousy post office. And when I go there, every now and then, and that road is so bad, and along from my house to here, I hit stretches that are bad. Why should I pay taxes into it, in the town? Because you'll, you'll take my property if you want, if I don't pay it. And that's an issue that is wrong. If you don't provide, we shouldn't pay you. Anyway, I would like to go back to some other issues here, and I think I might be hitting on some issues that an earlier presenter had hit on, okay? But if you go to page C95, and it's Town of Weathersfield, there's some kind of budget business you have in there, Meals for the Police, I believe. You had $14,000 in the budget last year, and now you got $8,900. Any financial person would have caught this, and maybe there's an explanation. Maybe they got a whole bunch of people that are gonna go and get trained, and they have to go somewhere, but there should be some explanation. I mean, from $1,400 to $8,900, that's a tremendous increase, and someone should have caught that and, and at least had an explanation. In business, that's how they do it, right? Now, none of you know that. The next one is psychiatric exam, exams. Last year, they had $3,300, now they got $5,500. Again, that's a large increase, and you can go right on down the line. I mean, the next one here is polygraphs with the police. They had $2,100 last year. This year in the budget, they want $4,200. That's a double. Didn't someone catch it? Or we don't care. But I think Mick, who's, who's pointing out some of these things, I know I was doing this yesterday, noticing this, and you have a new thing called body removal. What is that? 20, 2, 250 bucks for body removals, and they're gonna remove three of them. Then you got, then you got Priority Dispatch Maintenance, Pro-QA, whatever that is, maybe it's quality assurance. They didn't have anything last year, but this year they got $3,840. I'm still on page C95. I got, see all these tabs? We're gonna go through till midnight. Then, then there's Midstate Accident Reconstruction Software Updates, 500 bucks last year. Now it's 1,120 bucks. You, you should have explanations for all of these, for these. You got, on the next page, IA Pro, Anywhere Mentorship. You had nothing, now you got three grand. Are you padding everything? I mean, if I was in business, I, I'd drag the manager in, let beat the heck out of him. Adobe Creative Clouds apps. There was nothing last year. This year, it's $1,080. I know, these are all small numbers. Here's another one for $2,500. Leftless Shield FTO software, 2,500 bucks, but you didn't have it last year. Must be something new, and, and they're just adding things in. How about, how about general supplies? On the next page, general office supplies, from $13,000 to now 2,200. I know paper costs more money today. I know that, but come on. You buy in volume, you don't even pay taxes. We buy retail and we pay to the mores. Now, uniform replacements, $8,000, it's now 12,000. Does this have something to do with those police that are written up on the police blotter that this, some woman was talking about tonight, that there will be replaced, and now gonna be bringing in new police? C113, conferences, from 12,800 to 17,800. Our, our community isn't expanding. Why are these items bumping and bumping and bumping up? The community's not expanding. Here one. Deputy Chief, you wanna get another, another guy online? He, he, the current one's getting 16,000, now you wanna give him 24. I mean, that's a tremendous increase, but it shouldn't be in here like that. And as the, all of these pages keep going, I'm not gonna continue, but as you continue on this, look at all these, look at all these marks I'm gonna talk about. I'm not gonna do it, but, look, I would, I would stand here till midnight, because I have to listen to you folks so many times, and you go on and on and on. I should go on and on and on, because tonight's my night, but I'm not gonna do that. Take a look at those pages, C134, C135. If you wanna call me, call me, and I'll give them to you. But these issues should be looked at in reducing the budget. I also would like to know, and I know I spoke earlier, when I was leaving the podium before, about the balance of our indebtedness. I'm coming up with two numbers, because I don't know which one you paid and which one you didn't, but the one that, I, I'm, the high number is $43 million. The low number, if you paid the last year, I, I don't know if you did or not, it would then be $38 million that we owe. And as I've said, with that referendum of 100, and it was gonna cost us 168,000, 168 million dollars, with the existing debt we had, with the debt that would have came in from that 168 million, we would have been up to $200 million in debt. I'm having problems paying taxes on this lousy 30, 50, 30, whatever millions that are here to add more? Forget it. And your, and your budget for 6.75%? Forget it. I'll tear it apart, and I'll show you where you can save money. I'll come down and I'll show you, Mr. Manager, and I'll take nothing. It won't cost you anything, but you need to go through that. That's, you've got a lot of issues. You've got a lot of issues here, and I think we need to start thinking about our old citizens in town. Mr. Woodward, and there's a lot of other ones. Matter of fact, our town has approximately 30 to 35, 30, 30 to 33% from a number I've read in the past of senior citizens.
Mr. Young, can I ask you to wrap it up, please?
Yeah, yeah, but, but can I come back?
Well, we're gonna go through and see if there's anybody else.
See if there's anybody else, yeah. No, listen, I'll, I'll come back, 'cause it'll give me time to get a little breather, you know?
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for the second time? If there's no one else that wants to speak, you're welcome to come back up, Mr. Young. Sure.
I, I forgot, I forgot.
Sure.
A woman mentioned the, the legal.
Do your name again.
Quaterroy, 639 Highland Street.
Thank you.
A woman mentioned about the police department report, and it got me thinking about if we're gonna have legal challenges and things like that, we have to, we have to do something to force accountability on those legal challenges. And I don't know if the town can say, you know, bring a legal challenge against us, we're gonna go after you to pay our legal fees. 'Cause you're gonna get things, oh, we're gonna just sit here and pay legal fees, but they're not gonna have any kind of accountability. Our former chief can sue us out the thing, and, you know, he should pay for our fees because he's putting us through this, and he didn't have a very good record of what he had done. So that, that kind of is, is one issue. And then the other issue is, I have a very good friend of mine, he lives in Litchfield, and I was with him like a week ago, and we were walking on his 27-acre property with his 8,000-square-foot home, his beautiful pool, this could have been a resort. So I asked him, are you paying property taxes? Pays less than my neighbor does over behind me on the Maddle Drive. So, and I tell you that we're out of whack, and I said to him, "How can you do that?" He goes, "Well, I don't have a fancy town hall. We have pretty good schools in Litchfield, but we got the same town people working here that worked here before, and everyone's pretty happy. We went to lunch, it was a great time in Litchfield, knew all the people, how you doing? Kind of a pretty cool community. Go to the great woods over there, walk around. It's not bad." And I was like, you know, I don't have to live in Weathersfield, go to Litchfield, and look, pretty good. All my kids left, Boston, Avon, you know, so on and so forth. My wife won't let me leave, because she's in this town, and she's dedicated to this town, and I'm just saying that, you know, you gotta, you gotta do something to be competitive with what's going out there. And there's, you know, a lot of people know, know that, so. That's my final statement for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young, floor's yours.
Robert Young, 20 Coppin Mill Road. On page D8, D9, you got $120,000 for the web, the web school for doing some kind of sidewalks and stairs. That school was renovated 15 years ago. They spent millions of dollars on it. What are we now doing this again for? God damn, you know? How about the nature center? That was all we done over too, you have in here for $25,000 for expenditures. Why didn't you use April money on that? Playgrounds. How much have we brought in from the state of Connecticut for our playgrounds, and we still have items in our budget to spend on playgrounds, parks? You know, it's pretty pathetic. We go through this year after year, and it just keeps getting worse. You know, I've been coming to this podium for a long time, and recently, over the last several, three, four, five, six, seven years, five years, whatever, I've been talking about bringing revenue into this town. This town doesn't, is not interested in listening to that. They would rather find something to put on that property on Highland Street that's gonna cost us money and cost us for perpetu, into perpetuity. Whether they put a farm in there, who you're gonna have to support, whether you put trails in there, and you're gonna have to put trail, trails in, then they want $11,000 out of the April money? Greenhouse, $8,000 out of the April money? You could put senior housing in there. You could bring in, you could put 100-plus, 108 houses, just like they have over at Collier Farms, just like they have down in Rocky Hill across from St. James Church, and I don't know what that community is called, but I've referenced that many times. There's also another, another one two miles away, over on the Bowlin Turnpike on Demming Road. Those homes sell in the $400,000 range. Those homes would have people in them, 55 and over, and hopefully no children, to burden our school system. But, Mr. Manager, you, when you came here and you took over looking for what you're gonna put on the Keisha farm, you totally ignored the issue of putting senior housing on that property, upscale senior housing, that would bring in revenue. The whole council, except for Mr. Mazzarella, the whole council ignored it and continues to not wanna talk about it. You can make a million dollars a year in revenue. Million dollars for having 110 houses, 109, whatever that number turns out to be, once that place is totally built out. We hear people talking about spending and spending and spending, they, all they wanna do is spend. Nobody came up here tonight to talk about how to make revenue, did they? And when I come up here, you ignore me. Ignore me like I'm the plague. I don't get it, except for I am not a special interest person like these guys have, that they gotta take care of. They gotta take care of their special interests, and special interest is number one in this town. The rest of them can go, you know what? So that's just how it is. You need to go back and look at your, your whole scheme of what you can do with the Keisha farm and make money. Money's the thing you need, not put something like a playing field that's gonna now cost us money, that's going to, we're gonna have to maintain it, we're gonna have to put bathrooms up there, we're gonna have to bring water up there, you know, off the street, and the whole thing is gonna end up costing a tremendous amount of money. And I've also suggested to this town, there's a lot of things, putting a development in there, you could have your own people doing. We have the engineering, who has software that can, that can do subdivisions. We have people that are inspectors who would be able to lay and make sure the pipes and everything are done correctly. We even have the equipment to clear the land and get it ready and put the pipes in. You, the Town of Weathersfield, has that, and you have an opportunity. You know, I'm going to live like Mr. Woodward much longer, and I'm gonna be here reminding you. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna be, my doctor says I'm good for 120, so you're going, I will be back, and a lot of you are gonna disappear.
Yeah, I won't be.
A lot of you are gonna disappear, and this is an opportunity that should never be missed, and it's this council that let it go if it doesn't happen. Good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, I'd like to just thank the town staff and the Board of Ed for your participation or listening tonight, and remind everybody that we have a budget workshop tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock at the fireside room. Oh, I'm sorry. The council members are requested to bring their binders with them and the budget books. And also, I forgot to mention, Sue, did we have a few emails that you could just summarize, or, I don't know if you have those available? Okay. Well, those are in, those, they will be in the record. It was, I think there was three, maybe four, that came in late this afternoon, so, but make sure that, in the, in the minutes. Thank you. And I think that's it. Could I get a motion to adjourn? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?